Have I come out now?
Yeah, he might listen to this and ask you.
Oh, sure.
It's part of his issue.
Yep.
Hey, good morning Doug Carter's order. Hey, Mr. Madsker is here if you wanted to come up for public discussion. Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, it's eight o'clock, we'll call a meeting to order, can everyone stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, um. Anyone want to start for public discussion?
Mr. Madsker called a meeting a long time ago. I appreciate it, you can start.
Yep, that's fine. Wherever you want to be, Florida's yours.
Um. I had an intake or culvert put underneath the gravel road and uh I got a wet spot in my field, it's only about four or five acres. And for forty years I always wanted to tile that thing out. And the creek is just on the other side of the road. So, I got permission going into the road and um, to me, I didn't, they put a twelve inch main in and I'm only dumping a six inch tile into this twelve inch main. They say I didn't quite get it in right. Yeah, I probably didn't get it quite in the way they wanted it in. But there's only a little bit of water that's gonna flow through this culvert to dump in the creek. I could've just as well have that six inch tile coming out of my field and just ran another hundred feet and dumped it into the creek and save the taxpayers some money, remoney without putting this big twelve inch culvert in and a steel culvert in. So, I only got a few feet. The rest of the farm drains to the west because that creek runs along the west side of the farm too. And to me that would just overfill by putting that big culvert in. And I wouldn't have never needed that. And uh I don't know, do you have any questions? I think I'd like to just keep things as is then, I think we'd do more damage by digging it up. That's a sealed culvert that goes in that road. And look how many old clay tiles go underneath these gravel roads. And they've been in there for eighty to a hundred years probably.
I don't want to look at it, he doesn't have, there's no way you can tile much more into that tile than about the five acres I estimated. And there is a culvert under the road at the intersection, so that's what I observed.
Okay, and yeah, he showed the map to me here right before the board meeting and showed what he's got running in there, so it's not a lot of water flow.
No, the only thing that I see is, yeah, you've got plastic in the road ditch for four feet or whatever and you've got tile that was actually a culvert outletting into the ditch. And if it fails because of this, the district will have to pay for it. So, but, do you think it's gonna fail? I don't.
With low water flow like that, I'd kind of be surprised.
Yeah.
So. You good with leaving it alone, or?
Two sides to that, if we let somebody do it incorrectly, then are we gonna let everybody do it incorrectly? Do I think it's a disaster if you leave it alone? That's a terrible answer, but that's the truth.
Yeah.
Well, I know in the, the outlet pipe that was installed kind of backwards as far as
Correct.
The corrugated.
As far as the corrugated, where they meshed together there. I mean, would that be? That could be fixed without digging up the ditch.
The road.
The road, I mean.
Yeah, well, everything, all of it could be.
Right, right.
Even the two sections of cement and tile on the field side that are in the ditch should have been centered correctly.
Yeah.
To me is probably more important than the outlet pipe. Your opinion? Whatever you three decide, I'm fine with it.
It's your district.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's other places where there's plastic that goes into the road right away, but it's not under the road. I mean, the one we'll discuss later on is one of those. I don't, I don't know that we're gonna have a catastrophic road failure from a couple feet of plastic, but but I also don't want to set a precedent for that either, so that shouldn't be the normal. But in a situation like this, I don't know that it's the end of the world.
I mean, I agree with that. I don't want it to start being a regular thing or having to deal with it at the same time if it's not going to destroy the road. How's that for an answer, Roy?
Well, I appreciate you just letting things be, just to me, there's hardly any water that's gonna go into this thing because down another, I'm counting a hundred feet or so, three, four hundred feet. There's a culvert that goes underneath the road and that's gonna take care of all the surface water. This is a project I wanted to do for forty years. That's Louis, right along the side of the road, I drive by it and the neighbors drive by and I got that grounded out spot. And all I wanted to do is take care of this four or five acres, there ain't gonna be hardly any more tile running into this culvert. And I really appreciate you just letting, just let it be. Um, it's something I wanted to do a long time and, and uh I don't think there's gonna be any problem. I mean, I guess we've got, my main concern that day was not cutting that fiber off the line in the road ditch that day. That was my biggest worry and
Which, which side of the ditch is that on? Your field side or the ditch?
The other side.
Okay.
Yeah. The biggest thing is that he hired his nephew to do it, not an official contractor. Doesn't, didn't realize that culverts are supposed to clean but flow the water and
Well, we just called over to Mason City where the, the culvert came from and they said this is gonna be very little difference that he got installed backwards. They said it's not gonna make up hardly any problem with that steel culvert. Because it's all any water gonna be going through. It's just, there's four or five acres and we get the big heavy rains to help take care of that spot.
Yeah. Well, thank you for coming in, Doug.
Yeah, may I make a couple statements, I guess? Uh, this project was applied for, the board of supervisors approved of it. The road department did this according to policy. They provided enough concrete pipe to go through the road right of way, from fence line to fence line. It was not completed the way it was supposed to be completed. Now, if you allow this and in the future, if something happens, all taxpayers will be paying for this because of this action. The concrete pipe is there, it was not put under the road. And now you guys are allowing this to happen. The other thing, I find it hard to believe that any material supplier would say it's okay to install the material incorrectly. They're not going to say that. So, if there is a problem in the future with the outlet to that drain, somehow drainage district people will end up having to pay for that. So, I just wanted to say that. We'll go from there. I think it's wrong. And if, if, if we are allowing one person to not do things incorrectly, where does it stop? With the road, where does it stop?
Got any thoughts, Roger?
I'm a short timer. You guys are gonna have to live with most of these decisions for a long time. I'll just defer.
Well, there shouldn't be plastic tile in the road ditch right away. I, I'm gonna agree with that, but
You say there shouldn't be?
There shouldn't be.
So I just had an intake put in across the road, I'm pretty sure they put plastic in.
By their own department.
When was this?
Last week, two weeks ago?
Three weeks ago, two to three probably.
Right on the black道, intersecting with
Right.
I didn't see them put it in, but they, they had six feet plate, I don't think they had six feet of it.
Is that true Doug?
I, I have no idea, I don't know about any intake being installed. And it was installed, it was not replaced?
They were there working.
Yeah, I saw them installing it from a distance. I didn't, I didn't
The road department was doing it?
Right across from his house.
Okay.
I'm presuming it's plastic, just the way they talk to me.
You know? I didn't go down the ditch and look.
I didn't.
I just seen him working there.
I mean, yeah, I've been by there, but I didn't go down and look.
The biggest thing is, we've had instances where plastic pipe had, if people burn, if there's a fire, the fire goes down the plastic and then goes and burns out the plastic underneath the road. We've had instances or field entrances.
Yeah.
What Rod is alluding to, I'm not sure.
This cement culvert sticks out on the other side of the ditch. It does, it's all, there's a culvert all the way underneath the road and four feet into the ditch. It just about makes to the field.
I mean, like I said, the, the topic we'll talk about P fifty road crossing, I got photos on our collector, you can see plastic tile inside the road right of way, it's not under the road, it goes to clay under the road, but there is plastic inside the right of way. So, there, there are other situations around the county where there's plastic in our ditches. Um, it's just the fact of the matter. And I don't, I don't know of any way to chase down every square foot of plastic pipe we have in, inside our ditches.
Meaning he's dumping a six inch into a twelve inch. And it's just for a couple acres and I, I don't know, it's, I think there's bigger you're gonna find issues like that, I but, there's bigger issues to worry about, but I, I don't know.
Well, whatever you decide will be policy moving forward, I guess, you know, certain standards behind concern.
Well, and that's where I say I don't really want to set precedent with it, but at the same token, is it worth digging back up? Going to deal with all that again? I, I don't, I don't know.
It's your district, Roger. Just make it so it won't move on.
Well, the road is, the road is everybody's responsibility.
Yeah.
Well, how about we, if we're not gonna come up with a decision today, let's think on it and we'll act on it next week, something.
Put it on the green issues.
Okay, Tammy, can you make note for that? All right, um.
We have a few more green issues that are controversially we're gonna have to deal with.
Yeah.
We'll do them all on one.
Okay, so we'll deal with that next week. Thank you for coming in for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments for public discussion?
I'll start with you Kyle, uh, just for the record, you wanted to be the board chairman, correct? Nobody forced you in that spot.
I was willing to, I don't know that, that's a fair question of forcing someone into that, but
But you volunteered to take the spot.
I was willing to.
Okay, would it be a fair statement to say that your gross income from the county was lower than forty seven thousand dollars last year?
What does that have to do with anything?
Well, I'll get to that.
Are you including reimbursement for doing stuff? Could be, I don't have that dollar figure.
So if the taxpayers of the county have to come up with nineteen point three percent increase on taxes, would it be fair to ask the board supervisors to take a nineteen point three percent decrease in income? We have to come up with that money somewhere, you guys are the ones in charge of that. And you still get paid. I can't go get it from anybody else, I can't.
There's not gonna be a nineteen point three percent tax increase, yeah.
There won't be?
I can't vote for that budget.
But that's what's proposed.
That is what's proposed, you're absolutely correct.
Mm-hmm. And there's, there's a reason things will be discussed further today and whatever's needed going into the future.
Did you repeat that when she said, "Kyle, you're a member of the state"? Do you not think vote for this levy?
No, and I, I didn't, well, didn't intend to be in the
Appreciate that.
Because there won't
So too, well, I would need to be there.
Just
I appreciate it.
The tax
Thank you.
Levy rate isn't a nineteen percent increase, the amount of tax dollars is nineteen.
Well, yes, yes, you're correct Tammy, so the levy is not nineteen point three percent, but the amount of tax dollar increase is nineteen point three percent.
Are you voting yes or no on this coming up?
We're going to make changes today.
If they don't make changes, it will be a twenty percent increase in land taxes, subsidy.
I'll watch your video.
For multiple reasons.
Okay. I'll watch your video and get back to you then.
Thanks Tammy, see you.
Well, if it's not gonna stay at a basically twenty percent increase, then I guess I'll quit talking.
Okay.
If I, if, I mean, if I have the board's word that that's not happening.
That's what, that's what we're gonna be discussing later today as far as how we can make that.
I'll save you some time while somebody else talks about that.
Rod?
I've done some research before the board meeting. Took me probably two hours of your neighboring counties, which included Emmett, El Alto, Humboldt, Hickok, and Lumbah. Two of them have the same hours as the Sioux County has, seven or eight to four. But they get paid by the hour that they work. On one county, the other county is, they're paid by thirty five hour a week. That is eighty seven and a half percent of the forty hour a week. So take that on your total salary back each of the ones that worked the thirty five hours, you can save probably four hundred thousand dollars off your budget. Don't increase their hours because it won't save your budget if you gotta put your time, your salary back. Next step was their health insurance. Not one of those counties paying for family health insurance. They give employee health insurance a hundred percent, but they have different policies each one. So if you charge the family health insurance to the families, that two years ago is a thousand dollars difference between St. Angel family at twenty point two million dollars roughly. And the figures out, it took me two hours to do a little budget work for you guys. It's illegal to get paid forty hour a week for only working thirty five. Especially when you have employees that sit in this courtroom, boardroom complaining about a five cent monetary spending. They spend more dollars in here than they're complaining about that five cents. That was last year. It's on video, you can see all of them sitting here. And as they clock out, but they clock out, they it's pretty easy to figure when you watch. And that you're shaking your head, Carter.
Well, I've done this, some of that same math too, Rod, and I've called the neighboring counties to see what they do too. And that's, yeah, you're right.
I was bringing up another deal. Roger, you said you seen them working or you seen the work was done in the ditch there across from you?
I, I didn't hear that.
When they did that tile in the ditch, did you see them work or did you see the work was done?
I seen they were working, I didn't go check it out.
Okay. There's four people there.
Yeah, I seen that.
There's others that seen it too, I mean.
Yeah. I heard about it.
I saw that as well.
Spades do get dull and sting. It's my thoughts.
Yeah, you got perfect right to express it. Yeah. Thanks, Rod.
Yeah, thanks. Kristy?
So later in the agenda, you were talking about the sheriff's fees that the cities pay. Um, I just wanted to make sure you all understand that the sheriff's office sends out a letter in January telling the cities what the fee is. It's a contract that we signed and sent back to them, those have been done. I can't speak for all cities, but I can speak for the city of Burt, that we've had our tax levy meeting, we've sent our budget to the paper already and have our hearing set. So I'm not sure how you guys can like now come in and say you're gonna reduce that rate. So it's just something I want you to consider, that those contracts have been signed.
So I'm the clerk of Burt and I don't think any of us would disagree that the way it should be looked at. I just think for next
Next year, yeah.
It's a little late for this year.
Well, we can't do a tissue because that, you're correct, that is a contract, that is signed, that is a valid contract. If you're gonna change it, it has to be done in the next, next fiscal year.
We just signed it.
I agree with you, I agree with you a hundred percent.
And that's, and that's what's going to be part of our discussion of timing and all that as well, but I just think there is it, it needed to be talked about and started planning, so, yeah.
We're done with all of our stuff down in Luburn too, so, yeah. Yeah.
We fully realize that cities don't have any money or there's not a well there that you dig it up. Everybody's tight.
And the services are worth it, don't get us wrong, they're worth it and it's just truly agree that it should be looked at as you don't wanna redo our budget anyway.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for
Definitely. Tom wants to hire a deputy to run around this city.
Probably not.
Is somebody in the construction of the right of way folder that you could close that so I can save someone in there? Please?
I'm not in there.
Nope, I'm not in there. I was, I'm not anymore.
Okay. I'll have, you can have it back in like five minutes.
Thank you, thanks. Anything else for public discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes.
I'm moved.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any, um Josh did. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carried unanimous. Next up is, um, reviewing and approve the claims, so everyone had a chance to look through them.
Is the, Ayers and Cooney for Summit, is that the Schneider, one of the payments for their permits and stuff?
No.
No, or what?
That doesn't go anywhere.
That's legal fees.
That's just legal fees, okay. I'm asking motion to approve the claims and drainage claims.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? All second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Liquor license for River Road Golf Course. Okay, a motion, we have a second.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Thank you. Um, next is to set our date and time for budget hearing. I believe we had talked about doing that on the
Twenty third of May. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, originally Yeah, originally we were thinking the sixteenth, but that deadline meant we would have had to have it in the paper last week, so since we're still working on that, I recommend the twenty-third at eight thirty.
Oh, April twenty-third.
I'm sorry, April twenty-third.
You're good. Um, April twenty-third at eight thirty. Do I have a motion to that effect or any questions?
I'll move to set the date and time for eight thirty on April twenty-third for the budget hearing.
Okay. I'll second that. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimous. Yep.
Hi, Lisa, Doug in the office. Okay, we're ready for him in the boardroom. Oh. Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Yep, bye. He's on the phone.
Yep.
You have something you wanna talk about, Roger?
Nope.
Nope.
Just too early.
He's on the agenda.
Kind of late on the agenda, I just.
Nope, just too early.
I didn't know how long all that would take, so.
Okay.
You're not the only one. We didn't either. Pass, get those down, just you guys can eat, just take a look at them. They're the same thing, I'm pretty sure.
This is from our diplomat friend?
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, gotcha.
We can, we can talk about it during. We'll talk about it during the board discussion, but I figured since we had time here, we were waiting.
Yep.
Oh, we gotta do, we gotta do claims yet, so.
We're just gonna ask that question.
Of when.
Who's the claims that were close to sign?
I was wondering to do.
They're over here on the file. I didn't think that was appropriate for us to. Well, I guess we were done with public discussion about that thing.
We didn't? I heard about it before.
I think we talked about it.
We didn't talk about it in here.
I was just tired of it. So the location.
There, just that.
What is that?
Yep. It's just a good plus.
Oh, okay.
Who they address to. They're the same thing. My ears back.
Yeah, I, this has already been done, so. Yeah, this is already, I've already signed it and sent it back.
Oh, okay.
We've already verified the property description and that's just your company.
Okay.
Roger? I went through that out those new jail the other day. Well, that's pretty neat.
I have a tour to get, but I plan to go there someday.
We had a drainage meeting over there and they go out, it's all through the jail.
Okay.
How they set that up is really efficient.
Yeah.
I was impressed.
Good. Yeah, I have a tour to get. I plan to go there one of these days.
I said we was gonna close ours and just send the whole works over there.
There we go.
Warren, Doug?
Get some water in here.
We are up to the planning and zoning recommendation whenever you're ready.
Yes, uh, yesterday the Planning and Zoning Commission met and they recommended to the Board of Supervisors approval. Uh, of the planning and zoning change for twenty-one oh three one hundred Avenue, David Klein property. Uh, this resolution is very similar to, um, the resolution that was passed by Planning and Zoning Commission with the last. Whereas stating that the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended that the Sioux County Board of Supervisors approve the change. This is what we spoke about last week. So, uh, if the board would approve of this, that makes it a decision fine.
Is there any questions right away? Otherwise, this is resolution number zero four, zero two, twenty-four oh one. Okay.
And I'll second.
Perfect. Any further discussion?
Who's second?
Carter and Roger was second and Roger was motion.
Thank you.
Yep. Any further discussion? Uh, we'll call vote, please, whenever you're ready.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whack jerk?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Don't need to sign this one, right?
And if I could get this signed in by Kyle and Tammy, please, and I'll fill in the dates on that certificate, Tammy, or the, excuse me, the resolution number. All right, thank you.
All right, um, financial assurance report for landfill, did we get all?
Uh, we were unable to complete the financial assurance due to the, uh, extension, uh, our independent auditors have received. Once they file their report for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, then I can complete that. I have been, I, I requested an extension from the DNR and did receive that yesterday, so that's been extended. Next time, when it does become available for them to.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Um, and then I put the discussion with T fifty road crossing on the agenda. Did Tad Rysel contact you with our, uh, elevation we have out in the field?
He did. I'm not sure what the elevations are.
Well, he said there was, there was grade and I told him to call you and give you the details.
He called and there are, but I'm not sure what the elevations are.
Well, I guess, long story short, there, there is fall. Um, if we replace the road crossing and get that to flow the correct direction. There is fall to get down to the main, which is. I think you said five hundred feet away roughly. Um, I can measure that here, but.
Well, the lateral is five hundred, five feet.
Yeah.
Is what the county.
Okay, so.
Drainage district map showed.
Roughly five hundred feet, but, um. Uh, Craig Runcemeyer's the landowner on both sides of the road, his house train feeds into that line and he wants it functional. And currently it's got opposite fall of what it should. It goes uphill instead of going downhill if it goes through the road, so. Yes, it needs to be addressed in some form.
The, the east shoulder. Is twelve hundreds higher than the west shoulder. Twelve hundreds of a foot. Um, is the intent to replace the whole tile because of twelve hundreds of a foot?
Uh, when I was up there with Doug Crouch, he said it was approximately five inches difference from the west side to the east side.
That'd be fence line to fence line, I believe.
Okay.
So if a person were to. Patch that tile from the west shoulder to the west rightaway. Again, the west. West shoulder is twelve hundreds of a foot higher than the east shoulder. The tile was probably placed in the, I'm just guessing, twenties, nineteen ten. It extended five hundred and five feet. The road at that time was probably a path. Over the years, there's been construction of gravel road, construction of a paved road and shouldering that went on, along with resurfacing. I would say that many drainage tile. It would not be, it would not be uncommon to find that drainage tile. Are not at the same grade as what they were designed a hundred years ago and installed a hundred years ago. So my question is, if the road department would hook onto the west side and run that over. It's twelve hundreds of a foot. Is that adequate? If it isn't, are you expecting the road department to replace every crossing that we find where there is? There is. Not fall. If it's level, there's no fall. What are the expectations?
Well, we've got a, if I remember correctly, a six inch tile with five inches of. So that's pretty high majority of.
Again, the, the west, the west rightaway to the east, no, excuse me, the west shoulder to the east shoulder. It's twelve hundreds of a foot.
Are we responsible for rightaway or the shoulder to shoulder?
I can get, again, I can get from the west. Shoulder, we can patch that without tearing up the whole road. Otherwise, I mean, we'll go out and tear up the whole road if that's what you want. But then the question is. Every time this is encountered, does the board expect? This same activity to happen?
Well, I guess when we have. Tiles out in the field that have issues and are not in a good state of repair, it's our obligation by law to repair them to their original design capacity.
So, again, when tile or, when tile that are a hundred years old, you'll go out in the field and I bet you you can find places where there are twelve hundreds of a foot. Elevation changes. So, and if, if that's what the board is expecting, expecting, um, I would ask that you increase the budget. Because we are going to be doing a lot of repair.
I don't know anything about situations.
Well, you're, you're telling me, Kyle, that there's five inches in the county road rightaway.
It goes uphill, five inches from the west side of the road, fence line to the east side of the road fence.
But if it's only got.
From a west shoulder to the west rightaway line is four of those inches.
So if you were to fix some of the shoulder to the fence line, you would solve ninety percent of the problem. Am I getting something wrong?
I, I don't remember what, I don't know. I don't have the, all the numbers wrote down that Doug Crouch had.
But that was kinda what I was thinking too, that I was getting it pronounced. Cause really velocity takes care of tile that are laying too flat in a small section. Your, your velocity floors will take it up the hill a little bit if it isn't too far if you got fall on the other side. Unless I'm missing something here.
Would have been. I don't have any of my dates cause Tad updated them. I don't remember.
It is up grabby work.
Usually. Usually.
Well, I need to game through the black draft because we have a short section of pipe to correct. That's an expense we don't really need in the county budget.
So you're saying four of the five inches are on the west side of the road from the west shoulder to.
According to these notes. The west, the tile at the west fence line is at a foot. That's the rod reading. It, there's a lot of ambiguity here because we have two, two set, two different setups. The rod reading is fourteen twenty-five. The. Tile at the west shoulder is thirteen ninety-four. The tile at the east shoulder is thirteen eighty-eight. So between ninety-four and eighty-eight, that's, that's six hundreds of a foot, three quarters of an inch. And then at the fence line on the east side. Thirteen eighty-five. So, yes, from the fence line to fence line. The difference in elevation is. Whatever, but from the west shoulder line to the west rightaway line. Is a lot of that. And that's where there was some sort of a patch put. Or some sort of connection was made in the. West shoulder. That's where it turned from clay to plastic. And when that happened, I have no idea. There's clay under the road. I assume that that's clay from many, many years ago. And when I say many years ago, that's when the drainage ditch was just constructed.
So do you want it explored farther out in the field on the west side or what are you looking for that way? Cause did you talk to Tad about any of that? Because, did you talk to Tad about any of that?
I did not. I believe all he did was, he went to the, where lateral two B hooks into lateral two and took a couple and then located that tile between the, where the lateral connects and the road. And verified that it had fall, but what those elevations are, I don't know. And it's supposed to be five hundred and five feet at a tenth grade is what the total is, so that's five hundred and five thousandths of a foot total fall of the drainage district tile.
Well, if we need to explore it farther on the west side of the road, we can, but I, from the numbers I remembered when Doug Crouch was out there onsite, I don't remember him saying that four inches of it was on the west side of the road.
Those are his notes, I guess, that I just read.
You got further?
Okay, then, we can look at that further. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't dropped because I keep getting calls about it.
Would you like me to do anything?
I don't know. I'll probably have to talk to Craig and Tad and maybe get back to you, so.
Well, again, the road department, so that we're all talking about the same thing, the road department can help in determining elevations.
Okay.
Can cooperate that way if we are called. But again, if you, if you expect any place where anyone discovers a tile with a tenth of a foot elevation that's wrong, that is going to be, you're opening up a can of worms that the road department, that's all the road department will be doing. In my opinion, I, I think there's prob, you can go out and find a lot of that.
All right, well, we'll move on from that. Any construction in the right away? I thought there was-
Uh, we have two requests for construction in the road right away. Uh, Tantaka Burke Communications, permit zero four ten twenty twenty-four is, uh, to install some communication lines in union townships. Uh, section fifteen, ten fifteen, nine sixteen, and eight seventeen, uh, county roads, ninety avenue, one hundred avenue, and that would be two sixty street. Um, they'll be doing some plowing and some boring on this. I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
Could I have a- Okay, Roger. You have a second? Yep. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. And the other one, Doug?
Uh, yeah, then we do have a request, uh, for Midland Power Cooperative. They are, this would be on one hundred and sixty avenue between Greg Albert's property and actually it's a J M Burns property and abate. They would like to provide electric service, uh, remove the overhead and put that into, uh, undergrounds by boring underneath of one sixty avenue. Again, I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
Okay. Motion by Charles. We have a second?
Hold on a second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Anything else for right away?
Uh, that's our only request, so if we could have assigned those two, please. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, uh, construction, the bridge, uh, south of Tantaka. Uh, they have all but one foundation piling on the south side, uh, complete. Uh, they, I think it's at ten o'clock, they're supposed to be welding an extension. Cassup County's providing an extension for one pile and we're driving that so it'll get the bearing that is required. Uh, after today, all the co, all the piling are in, so I would, uh, think that, uh, Thursday or Friday, they'll be pouring concrete on that. Uh, down by George Gunter's, Ameri-Ma Bridge Construction, they, uh, have the deck on and side and they're going to be putting steel in there, so they're looking probably at a deck pore next week. Uh, still looking for a couple mechanics. I do have a draft program. I'm planning to bring the Iowa DOT budget and program to, I'll give this to you after I look at it. Um, next week to approve. This is just a draft. I guess Jack is not here right now, so I can go through it and, uh, give it to him. Uh, the bridges and, and roads that we have, the first sheet is the bridges and roads that we have under contract right now. So the three projects up north, uh, the bridge project south of type, we have a bridge project on the Boden-Hobarton Road, and we have two structures, uh, that are down by George Gunter's and Dana Harbors. For twenty twenty-five, you'll see, I guess, one thing you're going to notice in this program is that the amount of projects have been, uh, cut in over half. Uh, we just cannot, uh, we cannot build the miles of pavement, reconstruct the miles of pavement, reconstruct the structures, uh, with the local money and the road use tax money staying the same. So I just removed everything. To be honest with you, what I've done, I'm concentrating on keeping roads paved and keeping bridges that are on paved roads, not posted, trying to get those replaced and keep that system a, as good as possible. Having said that, you'll see that in, uh, fiscal year twenty-five, uh, we have two bridges, one being the bridge right north of Sexton, which, uh, is to a point where we would have to either post that quite low so only automobiles would be able to drive over that, uh, or it needs to be replaced. And then we have the bridge up on Michelson Marsh, uh, which I'm planning, uh, if that gets constructed using increment financing there. The fiscal year twenty twenty-six, uh, trying to do some resurfacing up around Tantaka, R fourteen in particular, R sixteen, there's a mile of road that, uh, goes, uh, there's a church in, uh, I believe that would be Winnebago County. It might be Hancock County. It might be right on the line. I'm not sure.
I think part of it's in both. Cemetery is-
Cemeteries on one side and the church on the other.
Sure, no, but I think it's-
Okay, but anyway, there's a mile of local road there, uh, that is in poor shape. The R fourteen's in poor shape and then the Bancroft Forest City, we've, uh, had it, uh, programmed for federal funds on that. And then we do have a bridge, this would be just around the corner from Michelson Marsh. Another one of our bridges that, uh, the life on that is down to a handful of years. And we have a bridge north of Lone Rock, uh, actually a steel culvert north of Lone Rock that needs to be replaced. Fiscal year twenty-seven, uh, trying to get back up north, finish up A sixteen. The P sixty-six road is, is one that is in, uh, uh, condition that we are looking to replace. The pavement has been there for, I think that was done about twenty oh one. And then the bridge on the Anton Blacktop, which is, uh, north and east of Bancroft. Then we have that bridge, uh, four seven zero five eight zero, that's on a gravel road. Uh, Prairie Township, north line of section five, excuse me, north line of section five, Laverne Township. So on the south side of Prairie. Uh, I kept that in there. We had received, uh, money from Cassup Wind Energy when they were constructing that and, uh, the idea was that, uh, we would replace three timber bridges there. This would be one that that money may be better spent on a paved road somewhere. I will allow the board to advise me what to do with that. And if you could, please, uh, let me know, uh, the sooner the better. And if we do keep it in the program, we can always, it's in the third year, uh, of our program, we can take it out next year. We can talk about that next week, but something to think about.
Water blacktops around, didn't?
There are, and it is a, uh, well, all of our gravel roads are used.
Doug, how much money are you planning for FY twenty-five accomplishment here, that second page?
Around two million dollars.
Didn't we increase that to three million?
I don't believe so. I think it's two million.
Unless you take all the equipment out of it.
I believe, believe we moved a million from new equipment to construction quite a while ago.
I will review that. That'd be the only way it-
I know we had talked about it, but did we, uh, did we end up actually doing that or not?
I'm going to try and find it.
The bridge on Anton Blacktop, isn't there a dam underneath that, is that?
No, no, there isn't. That's just one to the south of it.
There's two million dollars on this sheet, but I'm pretty sure we talked about transferring that over. I don't know if this is-
All right, what are you looking at?
This is two twenty-
Capital projects on your title sheet of your budget.
What's that?
Capital projects.
Capital projects in your own budget. Uh, fiscal year twenty-eight, um, I have bridges, or excuse me, pavement around Smith Lake and Transfer Station, uh, for resurfacing. Uh, there's a bridge up by Sway City that for some time we've been, uh, talking about sort of the bridge deck overlay on that. That's to the west of Sway City, and then there's a culvert, um, on a gravel road. A drainage ditch runs, uh, under the road there. A few years ago, they cleaned that ditch. It's a private trustee drain. They cleaned the ditch and the culvert is now high, uh, so that is one, uh, to try to allow that water and not get the ditch to fill back in. Uh, we need to repair or replace, and that could be something that we may do with maintenance dollars also. And then in fiscal year twenty-nine, we're, I've got a lot of resurfacing here. There's no way that we can do it. We've got the Big Six Road, uh, going from one sixty-nine all the way over to, uh, the county line. And some pavements, some local pavements down around Tantaka and P thirty from, uh, Lone Rock up to Sway City in that. And then there is a pony trust bridge up north that, uh, goes over a drain. It's located right at the half mile. If, if landowners, the, the simple solution to that would be to vacate the road and get that bridge out of there and allow landowners to access their property. We would not, uh, create a ownership problem as far as owners on the north and south side of that bridge. Um, however, I have not talked to anybody about that proposal, but it is in our fifth year.
Right now, the bridge is not passable by a semi?
No, it's a, it's a stout truss. Concrete deck, uh, rigid truss. So it, it is stout. It's a stout bridge. Um, however, it is fracture critical. One of the members would be taken out. The bridge would fall in. Um, with today's equipment, I think it's a twenty foot wide. With the equipment going through there, there is an opportunity to, uh, take a member out. But that's the program. And like I said, I'd like to have the board supervisors, I, I'm planning on having that on the agenda, going through that, uh, next year or next week. And, uh, talking about more.
Is there, is there any way we can, um, rearrange some of these so we don't have all the projects happening in the same area every year?
Just higher price if you do that.
Yeah, we could, but that would, yes, increase prices quite a bit. I try to group them in an area that will get us the best price, uh. You can, you can have a project by Laverne and a project by Elmore, Minnesota. I, I'd make the assumption that it, the asphalt is going to cost more to complete those two projects than it's the projects in each.
Are they all being bid out together in packages or?
Correct. For example, the, the fiscal year, the current year, projects under contract, the farm-to-market project on A sixteen, the local project, uh, on P forty and the local project east of Led, Ledyard, those projects are all tied together. Uh, contract bids, the contractor bids, there's one contractor, three divisions, three separate projects. The low con, the low bid is awarded all those projects.
I just know in past, we've had a lot of concerns with traffic with multiple projects all happening very close together.
They like it when it's done, though.
Yeah, we could, uh, we could not, I mean, we could not resurface anything. And the public, the traveling public would not be interfered with at all. However, you're, you're going to, during sometime, you're either going to turn that road back to a gravel, take the pavement off of it, or you're going to reconstruct it even more than, um, what you're doing. I, you, bridge projects are the same way. You, you have, you have to maintain your system. And the public for a, um, slight portion may be detoured, but I, I would hope that they understand that. We have a, uh, safety meeting scheduled for the road department on April nineteenth. Um, looking to get some quotes for equipment. That is kind of what is going on with the road department, uh, planning and zoning. I have been invited to Floyd County for a workshop. They are working on a wind energy conversion system ordinance. I've been invited- I've been invited to go over there. I'll be going over the end of April to that workshop. And then Cassup Waste Management Association, working on financial assurance next Wednesday. April ten at seven o'clock is our annual meeting. So be working on that as well.
Okay. Thoughts from the board, questions? Thanks.
Your best.
Okay, Marge, welcome. We got next up for doing a classification of DD-129. This was discussed here some during the public hearing or informational meeting we had with 129 and with Minnesota. CD-41, I believe is their number on it. The core purpose of what we had talked about was to use the Iowa process to classify the acres in this tile system on Iowa and Minnesota and then be able to split out the cost based on Minnesota's acres versus Iowa acres. That way, the land in Iowa would follow the same classification process as every other district in the state of Iowa. So basically, we would eliminate the issues of crossing the border for classification purposes if we use our process on the whole thing and then split it from that. But to be able to have those numbers, we need authorization and direction from the board for Tyler to proceed with doing that.
If I remember right, from Minnesota's, from that meeting, Minnesota side was on board with that, so.
Yep, yep.
Three hundred and fifteen acres compared to fifteen hundred and twelve acres, is that correct?
Something in that ballpark, three hundred to fifteen hundred, some odd number on top of that, yep. And Tyler would be able to have, would be able to put all that together and, and split it out. But yeah, I guess my whole intent was to keep Iowa acres under the same process that they would be if the district did not involve Minnesota, so.
So you're looking at reclassifying 129?
Yes, the tile system.
It forty-one in Minnesota would not be reclassified, it'd just be?
Just a tile system for this.
Just a tile system, correct.
Yep.
I, I agree with that.
Okay, well, I would make a motion to have Bolton and May proceed with the classification for the tile in DD-129. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, any further discussion, questions?
Can you repeat your motion one more time? Have Bolton and May proceed.
With the classification of the tile of drainage district 129.
Thank you.
And then following results from that, we would be able to proceed with setting up an agreement with Minnesota and all that for the system, but that's next step in the process.
Do they want a pre-classification?
This would in essence be a pre-classification, but it would be a little bit more final than a pre-classification.
So they're?
So it's basically declassification, but it would be like a pre-classification because it would be before construction happens.
That's my point. So we're really doing a pre-classification.
Pre-classification with more teeth to it. Because once we do the agreement based off that classification, that would be the final.
That'd be the final estimate.
Final classification.
Final classification.
So it's, it's really a final classification on the same timeline as pre-class.
So you're gonna have viewers who are over?
We would need commissioners. They have viewers.
They are, yeah.
In Minnesota, but yes, commissioners.
We need commissioners and everything, man.
Yep.
Sorry, I was thinking about Minnesota.
Yep. No, that's, yeah, that's correct. We'll need to appoint commissioners eventually.
They're not gonna appoint viewers in Minnesota?
I don't know. And to be quite honest, I really don't care what they do on their side of the border. I mean, this is, this would be the first structure of how the pavement would split amongst Iowa and Minnesota. Then, once we have Iowa's portion, it would actually be split based on Iowa lands. But, but this would be, because of the border, you have to split it between the states, then the states split it between their landowners. So, once Minnesota gets their portion, it doesn't matter to us how they split it. They can do, they can follow their own process, they can take care of that. We would follow our own process and take care of that as normal.
The only reservation I have is their, their process is quite costly compared to what Iowa's is when they do classification.
See, and I don't know if they would have to.
That's what I'm.
Because for a repair, I don't think they would. But this would, this would change how the structure is kind of written in the current agreement because that has a split for the ditch. And I, I don't know if you would know from last time it was updated. I think I took that paper out at home actually this last week. But it has a, Iowa would pay thirty-five percent of bills for the open ditch. And it says to take care of the tiles independently. But when we have fifteen hundred acres and roughly, and they have three hundred acres, there's no way we're gonna be responsible for thirty-five percent of the bill. That's, like, if you, if you translate that across, we're, it's not even a, even split acres-wise. It's acres-wise, it's closer to eighty percent on the Iowa side. You can just plug the math into a calculator. But that's where, when Marissa and I had talked and Tyler was involved and their commissioners were involved, I think it was at one of the last informational meetings, was, I said, if we used our process first to do a classification on the whole district, we could look at it as if it was all Iowa ground in that nature from the beginning. Then Tyler can take the acres that are actually in Minnesota, see what their dollar value totals to, that dollar value or percentage split then can be paid by Minnesota. We pay our Iowa side, so everyone on the Iowa side would still be treated the same as they would be in any other drainage project in Iowa. And I don't know how you get any more fair than that.
I don't either. My, my only fear is that they would put costs on 129 in the same way they do in Minnesota when they do some of their repairs and some of that is ridiculous.
Yeah, so no, this would not have that happen.
Yeah, but that's my, you don't want the Iowa farmers to be stuck with some of those buying acres and everything else that goes into a project up there.
No, and that's, that's the other piece of the actual, like, improvement possibility there. And that's why they're going the direction of a repair right now. So you don't have to deal with the environmentalists and all that.
They're not gonna go through the DMR after?
Nope. There's other pieces to the puzzle there, but the project they're proposing is a repair with a different, um, different location, so it would split the east main from the west main. And it would actually double the capacity on paper, but with the condition of the tile, it should more than double the capacity just with that project alone. So this classification is just the foundation to the rest of the agreement moving forward. Any other questions or thoughts there?
I just like protecting 129 and 162 from the cost.
Mm-hmm, yep. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. And yeah, there'll be more to come on that topic, of course. And then we got a repair request.
Got it. Number twenty-two, it's in drainage district number ninety-eight, right by Lone, Lone Rock. Eugene Thompson's out there and he's already done it there.
Is that the one he called me about?
Yeah, he called you and then he called me.
I told him to call you on that one. Okay.
It was pretty simple, straightforward repair.
Yep. All right, I have a motion to direct supervisor to take care of the repair request. A motion, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
All right, aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. All right, discussions are, thank you, Marge. Anything else you have for us?
Carter, if you wanna sign the letter to send to the landowners.
Okay, okay.
Would you do it?
Um, and, yeah, I'll, I'll stop in the opposite. I just ordered you an email from Chris Montague, that's what's been, gotta repair them.
Okay. Okay, thank you. First thing I wanna do is just clarify some of the property tax stuff because there appears to be some confusion on how the property taxes work. So you guys all know what rollbacks are. It's the amount that's rolled back by the state every year. So for example, if there's a rural property that's valued at three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, that's their assessed property value. The amount this year, this next fiscal year for fiscal year twenty-five, that they will be paying taxes on are a hundred and forty-seven thousand. So they're not paying taxes on that whole assessed property. They're paying it on the taxable property value, just so you understand that. So I did some figuring on this calculator that the state, state supplies. So if you take that, and of course, this isn't exact because it doesn't include assess, assessors, stuff like that. If you take that amount, um, based on the current levy amounts and the rollback, which has gone down from last year, that property will be paying less than they did the previous year. Now, I'm not saying anything about agreeing with the tax rate you have. I, I'm not saying anything about that at all. I just wanna make sure you understand that those tax rates, just because you see assessed value going up, doesn't mean that those tax, that's the taxable amount because it's not. So just wanna make sure you understand that.
That's why people were confused calling me or everyone about why are the numbers higher on the front side and the percentage lower on the backside, yeah.
Kind of, and then, you know, as far as, as far as the nineteen percent increase, that's on the amount, the property tax amount that the county's receiving.
Right.
The levy rates aren't going up nineteen percent, just so you know that. Again, I'm not saying anything about whether those amounts should be increased or decreased. I just wanna make sure you understand the process of that, okay? Um, yeah, I'll be gone tomorrow for election training in Dennison. Marge and I will both be there. We have gone through the old laptops and printers over at the election center. Derek is gonna be listing them on the government site so we can get some money back on those once our new equipment arrives. So we're gonna wait till that to make sure we're not in a bind if something bad would happen. Right now, we're working on ballots, reviewing and approving the ballots. They have to be submitted back and approved. Absentee voting starts on May fifteenth. So we need to get those to the printer and get those back in time. And that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Roger, do you have any order, part?
Yeah, we had an IDDA meeting last Wednesday. Not too much has changed as far as what we're doing. Most that we talked about was probably, I have a file twenty-six sixty-four about the pipeline and using an eminent domain and crossing county town. Not too much new on that. So far, they haven't got too far in the state with doing anything. Senate file thirty-one ninety-six, appropriations involving state government entities with agriculture and natural resources and protecting the environment, not too much has went on with that. We're not sure that's gonna go too far. House file twenty-six forty-two, it's still intact and that's soil and water resources and improving regulations and making appropriate appropriations to it. That's still intact. And House file twenty-five thirty-nine, open meetings and recording. And we're still working with that, trying to make it a little drainage hearings on how we have to provide information to the public. We're still working on trying to get an email of all the habit, email to all of the landowners instead of writing letters, doing both, so that when we have a public hearing or we have a letting, we are able to inform them more readily and easily about the upcoming meetings.
I don't know how we're gonna.
For those landowners that have emails.
I don't know how we're gonna get emails for everyone and keep that updated.
Well, there's different ways we've talked about it, it's possible.
It could help.
It, it's always possible.
Yeah.
Publications, how much we have to publicly put in newspapers. Some of the counties are saying that we're having an enormous amount of billing extends to all the public records that we have to do with drainage into the papers. And we wonder how much is read and how much isn't read. And the state is wondering the same thing. Does anybody read all those public records?
Some people do, but.
It's still alive, they haven't thrown it out yet. They're still talking about increasing sales tax. And they're wondering what to do with the money after they increase it. So far, it's going nowhere, and I think that's not gonna get anywhere. Senate file twenty-one fifty-one, that's Don Etler's file, Bill. And it's pretty well dead in the water.
Yeah, that's not going anywhere.
House file one sixty-three, it didn't make the final, that's dead in the water. House file twenty-nine seven's dead, twenty-ninety-nine's dead. Senate file thirty-sixty-six is dead. And House file seven twenty-nine is dead. And other than that, we're on budget at the association and we're starting to plan the next general meeting again for December. Everybody agrees the same place, same time, good as any.
If we could coordinate it, I don't, I don't know if they sent the stuff for ISAC for, I think we're District Two?
For ISAC.
Yeah, I don't remember what number, but that, that's always been a conflict for us. Those meetings have been the same day.
Whether your chairman of ISAC is on the Iowa hearing, his association board, so he should be able to give some input.
Yeah, yeah, just food for thought, but yeah.
Yeah, so I would think that he would take that into consideration.
Yeah.
Then I looked at some drainage issues and listened to phone calls about too high-priced land taxes. That was my week.
Josh?
I did not have any meetings last week. And I got phone calls about taxes and stuff. And then Friday, I got, I would department corrections.
Department corrections?
Department of Corrections.
After our board meeting last week, I had Care Connection, but with the tax levy hearing going along, it was late to that, and then they mostly threw it at the meeting anyway. So I attended the virtual drainage meeting with DD-129 that we just talked about. I know what Care Connections, Marissa Miller gave update that she. Um, I know what Care Connections, Marissa Miller gave update that she had given to um, some of the sheriffs. I'll go on the police department and uh, as well as the board supervisor, Kyle and I were at that meeting. Um, just to give an update as far as how her work has been in that trial program over the last couple of years and um, just doing the same thing for the Care Connections Board, so that was really the, the major part of that. And um, but yeah, other than that, I, I had no meetings.
Okay. I don't think I had anything that has never been discussed, so.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Take a quick break, we'll be right back.
Yeah, everyone, anyone needed a quick break?
Yep.
Five minutes, ten minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Let's do that then.
Okay.
Where's he, where's he located?
Two and a half miles north of Delvin, Minnesota.
Where's Delvin?
You gotta ask Cammy where Delvin is.
Straight south of Mankato pretty much.
Okay.
Is it a little bit?
No, I think you're thinking of Easton. Delvin.
Okay. Yeah, it would be a straight sound for almost on that.
What's the east?
Yeah, it's west of Easton, yeah. It's between Winnebago and.
East to west and west to east?
East to Winnebago.
Well, if you go to Minne, if you go to Mankato, you'll find a sign that says Delvin.
Okay. I'll have to get on the Google machine and see. See where it says.
It's a very, very little town.
I'll learn some today.
Yeah, I learned some today. It's not very big.
That's your back door.
Mm-hmm, pretty much.
Alright, so everyone ready here? Roger, Josh. Okay. Well, I hear. Okay, I think we're, we're ready, everyone's back from break here. Um, next item on the agenda is to discuss courthouse hours and lunch. This was brought up in our public hearing last week and it had been talked about previously, but wanted to put it on the agenda so there's opportunity to talk about it specifically. Roger, do you have any thoughts?
I gotta answer a text message, somebody wants to listen to it.
How long ago was the hours changed? Does anybody have a record on that?
Decades ago.
Thirty-plus years.
Oh, I know, yeah, I know it was that long ago. Was there a reason as to why that was done that long ago?
Saturdays mornings were eliminated.
Yeah.
So it's always been eight to four and then Saturdays were until noon?
Except for the attorney's office and the engineer's office, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. Got any thoughts?
It's a contention that's been around for a long time. And basically you have a hard time explaining to the public why people get paid for forty hours and they don't work it. That's a tough one. I'm not any good at explaining it.
I haven't been able to answer that one either.
Well, the way I look at it is, uh, there's a lot of other jobs that people work and, including myself. My other job is eight to five and I don't know why it was dropped when they dropped the Saturdays that it wasn't increased to eight to five then. It probably should have been, but.
At that time, I think there was more unions involved.
Probably, yeah.
No, I don't think so, 'cause I mean, I, I'd say thirty years is, not thirty years, I'd say fifty, sixty years. And the courthouse union was probably in the.
Eighties?
Nineties, not nineties. Yeah, so we're talking fifty years ago or sixty or I don't know, before most of us were possibly going, are working here for sure. And I think people accepted the job with those understanding, it wasn't something that was asked for, that's just what was in my case advertised.
That was the hours of the courthouse when you're hired, yeah.
That was good, yeah, that wasn't something that was given, that was the conditions of the job when I started.
I don't think anybody here has worked here for fifty years. Yeah.
So if this is such a great benefit to the employees, why don't we have forty, fifty applicants when a job opens up here like we used to?
I don't think anybody has forty, fifty applicants in.
Yeah, we did. When I was the jail administrator, when we had the jail, we had fifty to a hundred.
Recently?
When I was.
That's what I, that's what I.
Ten years ago.
I was saying, yeah, everyone's having trouble getting apps today, not years ago.
Even.
There's no reason why they're knocking down the doors anymore.
That's what they need job.
Yeah, today, today versus three, four years ago is not comparable with number of applicants for anything. Um, it's just.
So that's the point exactly, why do you wanna take, which essentially is a benefit away from somebody that might hire? 'Cause you can't get applications now.
So you think you're gonna lose positions, people from the positions, if you take it away?
I didn't say you're gonna lose, I said you can't get applications now.
That's what they need job.
So why take a benefit away then, that's been here for fifty-plus years?
Budget.
What are you gonna gain? It's already been budgeted in our hours, sir.
One point two million dollars.
Hours, it's already budgeted into our hours.
That's different, your numbers there is a different topic than hours, but.
Yeah, you're right, Kyle.
Yeah.
Eighty-seven percent of your pay.
Not my pay, sir. No, sir, I'm hourly.
Do you work forty hours then?
I guarantee I do, and plus.
Okay, four.
And on behalf of the courthouse employees, a lot of these people are here after four and here before eight o'clock in the morning doing their job over and above those set hours, so it's not what you think, five days a week, eight to four, we're here before and after as well.
And our job, our job, we're open twenty-four seven, sir. We don't take weekends off, holidays off, nothing. We're here when you're sleeping.
Now, I'm working when you're working too, sir. We're twenty-four seven too, I mean, it's, everybody works the same, this idea, if you punch a clock, you better punch when you start a person, you better be at work.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, we probably need to have this board discussion with orderly discussion on top of that, but at the end of the day, I think the paid lunch is probably more of an issue than the hours, courthouse hours. Um, they do in some form tie together, but I, I don't, I don't know very many employers that you would go to that have a paid lunch.
The road department does not have a paid lunch, they get a half hour unpaid lunch, correct?
Correct. As well as the engineer's office.
You also get a half hour unpaid lunch?
We get here.
Or your salary, but.
We open the office at seven-thirty, we close the office at four, and we take a thirty-minute lunch.
Sure.
What's the number of employees in the courthouse then that are actually hourly per salary? Because once your salary, they're not, you're paid for the job and not specifically the hours?
Technically, yes.
It's just the custodians that are hourly.
But then we would have like Brittany and.
They're salary. They're all salary.
Even the clerks are salary? I think Willie and Ron and Deb, and Deb are the only, are they the only hourly workers in this courthouse?
Far as I know, but I don't know.
I think there's paid hourly and there's a difference, I mean, and that's gonna go a whole nother discussion.
Yeah.
We haven't addressed that one.
Yeah.
It's untold, it's untold, so there's a whole different, that's what you would.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause then you count comp time and all that. Um. So that, yeah, that is another big conversation, or complicated one.
Well, I don't know if it's complicated, it just a half hour on the day would solve a lot of the problems.
If, if the lunch is unpaid for half hour, yeah. Because that factors into earning comp time and all that, doesn't it?
Well, they don't earn comp time till it's forty hours, isn't that correct?
Right, that's true.
Am I correct on that? So I wouldn't agree with that.
So no, wouldn't.
I mean, that's the only thing you're really talking about. And this is, this isn't an hourly discussion, it's a discussion whether you wanna continue to pay lunch. Because you're paying lunch, that means they're working eight hours a day or getting paid for eight hours a day. So that's the forty-hour discussion right there.
Yes.
So if you wanna take away and open it up from eight to four-thirty, then you'd have a half an hour paid lunch.
Yes.
You know, if you don't wanna pay any lunch, then it's an hour off, but then realize in some offices, that can impact availability. Because if you have a paid lunch, I can call them back if necessary. If not, now you're talking comp time. If something comes up, that's the issue, and I can only speak to my office. We're in trial right now, it's a different situation, you know, when something has to be done, I need them back promptly. Um, sometimes they're taking their lunch in the office, you know, and so they're available during the round. So, and, and that's what we're really talking about, I mean, if someone asks me, you know, the how can you get paid for forty and not work forty, it's an hour paid lunch, I mean, that's, that's what the answer is, it's forty hours a week. Whether other companies out there do it, I don't know. Um, but my office is eight to four-thirty as far as open. Um, and much the same as Doug's as far as, uh, you know, he's seven-thirty to four, but, so I mean, it's you know, and I stagger my, my front office staff in that regard, so it's, it's still the same concept that the other offices are enjoying. But um, that's what it comes down to, right? I mean, seriously? We're not talking about anything else other than whether it's paid lunch or not, and if it's a half an hour paid lunch and a half an hour work time, then you have to go to four-thirty unless you have to come in at seven-thirty. Um, but that's what it comes down to, that's the decision.
Yeah.
That's what, in my opinion, I, I don't know if I'm accurate, but that's what we're talking about.
I'm, I'm talking about hours at courthouse that open basically.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's the discussion I'm having.
Yeah, I mean, well, you know, we, we suffer with the same hours in the bank too, I mean, you know, it's you're not gonna go to, well, I guess they do have the satellites now, you can just cruise in there by four-thirty, but um, you know, so and that's the difficulty for a lot of people, I think, getting in here before, before four. But I don't know if getting in here before four-thirty is much better, and I don't know if any of them's gonna be able to get in before five because I think quite a few of the businesses will get off at five, right? So.
Well, 'cause we as a board cannot, for example.
Well, cause we, as a board, cannot, for example, I can't, the board cannot say, Willie, you need to work X amount of hours this week, that is up to your department head, that would be Tammy's decision. And so, we can just set the hours of courthouses open, and it would be up to each department head how they choose to function within those hours.
And whether that lunch is paid or not.
And whether the lunch is paid or not, yeah.
You got it.
So.
Nailed it right on the head there.
Yep.
When I called around Hancock County and Palo Alto County, their hours are eight to four. Hancock County pays the employees for a thirty-five hour week. Palo Alto County told me that they pay by salary for a thirty-five hour week. All the other counties around us were on eight to four thirty. But you shouldn't go there if you're actually-
So I guess what's the thoughts or desires of the board, increasing courthouse hours, or?
That's my opinion.
To four thirty or five?
Four thirty.
With a half hour paid or unpaid lunch?
But that would be up to the department head then, wouldn't it be? No?
It's up to us for whether it's paid or not.
Okay.
I have no problem with a paid lunch, I guess, in some respects, because they're here and they can be called in to order while they're having lunch, but most of them, a lot of them stay for lunch. And then it'd be consistent with the road department and everybody else.
Theirs is unpaid.
They don't get paid, no, but the hours. So-
Kind of. Then if you go to four thirty and have a half hour paid lunch, you'd actually be more than forty hours.
Forty and a half.
You're forty-five, right?
No, you'd be, yeah, yeah. Because you take away the-
Cause you add a half hour.
You're adding a half hour at the end, and then you're taking a half hour away, then-
So you'd add an hour to what they work for actual working, plus you have a half hour paid lunch. So you'd add an hour and a half every day. Or, no, it's just an hour.
Eighty to four thirty, take a half, half hour lunch.
Yeah.
Half times five.
Yeah.
Split in years.
That would be a, yeah, be an extra hour.
Chris and Joe, stretching.
Mass out, um, so the only way, if you went eight to four thirty and kept, if you did, did it have to be half hour unpaid, half hour paid lunch? Did not go over your forty, and then you're gaining an hour if you do the exact same time and still pay lunch, you're going to eight and a half hours a day.
Right, yeah, that's, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
So you'd be adding hours.
If you paid the hour lunch.
You paid the-
So you're you're adding a half hour at the end of the day, it'd be an extra two and a half hours a week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you're you're adding
Two and a half.
Two and a half hours at lunchtime.
So you've got the five hours.
So there's your five hours if you have an unpaid half hour lunch, it's the, it's the same schedule per se, is.
So are you keeping the salaries the same? So really, what are you gaining?
You're just changing the hours.
Changing work hours.
So. That's all.
But if you went with a eight to four thirty with a half hour unpaid lunch, would be forty hours a week that you would work, but you'd be open forty-two and a half, right? So if you have the
You were correct.
A paid lunch, you would have forty-two and a half hours that you're paid for.
You're correct.
So that's, that's where I was saying, you'd be adding hours with a paid lunch.
Yeah, you would.
Being open till four thirty with a half hour unpaid lunch would be forty working hours.
That's right, an hour and a half.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm trying to tough that down, if you want to keep the same hours, that half hour paid lunch.
Then you would have thirty-seven and a half that would be working, and two and a half that would be the lunch. With the same courthouse hours. But if you extend the hours and have lunch be paid, it would add on.
We can't do that, my point is, you do one, the other.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to follow, cause I wasn't following that in the beginning.
Can I, can I ask something?
Yeah.
If, if I may, um, so when, when, first of all, when was the discussion regarding the hours that last week?
The-
Or not the hours, but somebody said public.
Public brought it up during the property tax hearing last week.
And, and a valid concern, I mean, I'm not going to dismiss that, but shouldn't that discussion about hours for the courthouse, um, if you're looking at it being equitable for the taxpayers, which I'm one to, and, um, the, uh, the employees who are serving the taxpayers, wouldn't it be equitable to have the hour discussion prior to the budget discussion? Because if you, because you got a zero percent raise across the board, which everyone's accepting, and now you're saying, okay, you're gonna get no raise, and now we're gonna work you an additional two and a half hours a week. And I'm not saying that it's a bad discussion, I'm just saying, are you putting the cart ahead of the horse here? Whether the, the courthouse hours change is not the reason I'm bringing up, should it be ahead of the budget, consequently then, should it be a topic for next budget year?
Oh, and if-
Because you're not changing or impacting the budget at all.
We're not saving any money, but I do-
You're not saving any money.
Right, exactly.
But I mean, in order to be fair, because I don't like my property taxes going up, and, and I think everyone in this room, we all pay property taxes, and it, it sucks to go up, and I, I share Rod's concern, but I, I'm just trying to look at, for also our employees and say, all right, we're gonna save taxpayers' dollars, and we're going to give zero percent to make this budget work. Is it fair to them to say, okay, now we're going to increase the hours of the courthouse, or decrease the amount of hours for unpaid lunch or paid lunch? I mean, that, that seems to me to be a little unfair for the employees, and, and I just am bringing that up for, for your consideration. Because what we do today, what you decide right now, doesn't impact the budget at all.
And I, I think Todd's got a good point in that we're here today to figure out how we're gonna not have nineteen point three percent increase in property taxes, so this is something that is gonna be discussed, and something that is likely to occur in the future, uh, but doesn't need to be today.
Right, at least gives some, you know, idea of what's going to, and why, the reasons behind it. I think you guys are sharing valid concerns, I think Rod shared valid concern, which I don't think a lot of taxpayers in this room also have that same concern, but I think, you know, just make sure that it is, it is a situation where it's addressed appropriately, uh, plenty of, of input and feedback, and at least, uh, uh, some ability for preparation.
Rod, did you have one more comment?
Going to increasing your half an hour in your day, theoretically, if, if the workers are getting their work done in that thirty-five hours, and you're increasing it by half an hour a day, you're actually, uh, should be able to take five employees off your payroll of the courthouse, because you got more hours worked per employee.
I hate it works that way, Rod, because they all got busy, made jobs.
Right, I know, but, but I'm, theoretically, when you-
Theoretically, it might sound like that, but it'll never work that way.
Christie.
I would like to say that a lot of the employees in courthouse do not take the fifteen minute breaks. A lot of us do not take our full hour lunches, a lot of, there's a lot of times during the year that elections, all of a sudden we're busy, that we are eating at our desk, we're not leaving. So I, I do think that's part of it, that, I don't think people realize that we don't all, you know, take that time. Just because it's given, doesn't mean we take it.
I agree.
I, I agree, I'm just comparing the other counties around us.
But we don't know what they do in, in our office, I mean, honestly, I, they might have different things.
Every auditor.
They're telling their time.
That's what they tell you.
But, but you don't know, are they taking their fifteen minute breaks, are they taking their full lunches? Are they having to work extra hours?
Make a phone call.
Phone call's different from being there twenty-four seven in a job.
You can't, it, it, you can't compare, it's not apples to apples.
We're not gonna, well, just table.
Keep moving, yeah, okay. Well, food for thought for everyone, we'll
We'll take that up and discuss that later on.
So I make a great point, get your cart before the horse, get some numbers in line.
Of course.
You got to.
Well, it's okay.
Right now, I'm upset, so the cart's going before my horse, but yeah, pick it out. Rural department heads, communicate, see what we can do with the whole.
Yeah.
Well, the next item here is to discuss the increase in law enforcement contracts to the cities. We did have Christie and a few others here this morning talking about the contracts that were already sent out and, um, some timing with that, but I guess, um, one thought and question I had for Roger here, I know Phil, like with our EMS stuff, he can run reports for the different jurisdictions and where, where calls for service are and stuff. I think maybe that'd be some valuable information to start looking at for going forward to see where some of those distributions are, and look at increases for next year, so just kinda wanted to start that conversation.
Sure.
We can do that, we can, uh, put it out by cities, but it also includes the rural calls. I know a couple of cities have reached out to me and wanted those numbers in the last year. The thing I would caution the board about, number one, I think we're way too late to have it happen this year. We already sent the contracts out in February, and six of them are signed already.
Yeah.
So I think we're too late in the ballgame to talk about this year. The second thing I think you guys should do is research chapter twenty-eight E, because at some point, if we're gonna increase the cost of these cities, they're gonna require us to have better coverage, and we cannot do it. There's no way I can put a deputy in ten communities every day to guarantee them so many hours. That's why I'm assuming that previous boards and previous sheriffs agreed on this two thousand dollars, it's a very simple twenty-eight E agreement, if you read ours, it's one page long. It basically says that we will respond to calls. Otherwise, you're gonna look, do some research around the state, there are sheriffs that contract with communities, and they will charge them by per population or a set fee, but it's anywhere from fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars, and these towns aren't gonna pay it, they don't have an inner budget. And quite honestly, with ten certified deputies, you tell me, anybody in the public here, tell me how, how we're gonna cover a county of a thousand square miles and ten communities with ten deputies and guarantee them ten or twenty hours a week of coverage, meaning that a deputy will suck there for up to twenty hours a week. So I'm not in favor of an increase at all, I think that we just need to keep it generic. Um, I don't know where you're looking at for money for your overall budget, but right now, it's twenty thousand dollars is what we bring in for revenue on our small towns. And I don't know what you're talking about, increasing it, but I can pretty much guarantee you, if you increase it too much, they're gonna come to me and say, okay, we want X amount of hours of coverage. When I have two deputies out on a night shift, and they gotta respond to calls in accounting and everywhere else, how are they gonna cover ten communities and guarantee them hours? Unless you're gonna give me ten more deputies, and I gotta sign them simply to contract towns. So it's something that you gotta do a lot of research on and think about, um, I'm not an expert on twenty-eight E, but there's options in there, but right now, the current contracts we have are pretty generic. It simply says that we will respond to calls. So if, uh, Bert has an emergency that requires law enforcement, it gets dispatched out, and our deputy will respond to it. Right now, we guarantee him no hours of coverage, other than routine patrol. So it's something that we gotta look at as accounting, we're gonna look at increasing it, um, be prepared for the fact that, I mean, I, if I was the mayor in a small town, I'd say, well, if we're gonna pay you more money, then we want somebody here setting in our town, patrolling X amount of hours per week. When I started, every town had a police officer. That's not true anymore, all we have left is bankrupt.
That adjusts as a fee student, in fact, and-
And I can't skip the bankrupt, but I gotta fill him when he retires, they may have a difficult time bringing in a full-time chief, but-
My opinion is, it's not gonna make any difference on the state budget.
No.
I mean, no matter, if you increase it enough to make a difference on the budget, they're not gonna do it.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, that revenue goes back into general fund, correct? That twenty thousand a year goes back into general fund, so it's not gonna help me attain more deputies or hire deputies to cover these small towns.
No.
And I think that's what the general public does to understand, is that there's no way we can guarantee them seven amount of hours. We're a double county, I mean, we've got twelve communities, most counties have four out in the rural areas, you know, four or five, but we're unique because we are a large county, uh, the engineer's office has the same issue with the amount of coverage that they have, provide for roads and everything, we're no different, we just, we can't, we can't guarantee towns X amount of hours per week, or excuse me, per year. Um, and if, if you're looking at increasing it, I think sooner or later, a mayor's gonna start reading through this and think, well, then maybe we should start getting X amount of coverage. And I'm not an expert on twenty-eight E, I know we have them, but, uh, what briefly I did read through it is, there are options there, but of course, it all involves taxes. So do the small towns wanna pay more taxes? That's the question. So if you're asking my opinion, I think it needs to leave where it is.
At the very least, it'll be where it is for this year.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think it's something we could start looking at, information and thinking through that going forward.
I don't think you're gonna solve the budget issues by changing anything, I don't know what you're doing, is my thought.
Well, not today.
Well, even in the future.
A couple tens of thousands, isn't it?
Quite, you tax the cities, it wasn't, it's still tax dollars. You're not saving anything.
And the city's gonna-
You're shifting taxes from one person to another.
The city's just gonna make up for it by doing more in the city level.
But that's the problem, is the county taxes are primarily paid by people in the rural areas. On, even, even on general basic and-
Want to fix that while we go to the school. That really gets nailed in the rural areas.
Yeah.
And we, we accept that real readily, we've never challenged that.
It's not up to us to change. Tom, does that hit any of your concerns from last week?
Well, everybody wants as much as they can get, I understand, but when times are a little tougher, we don't always get that. I don't have all the answers, I don't know all the answers. I, I'm, I'm just observing today, because I kinda wanna know what you guys are thinking, uh. I have a lot of thoughts, but I don't wanna say them publicly.
Well, and I think it is something that we should dig deeper into and have on our radar to address going forward.
There are options under twenty-eight E, but it involves taxes. You can raise it up to a dollar fifty per thousand and form a district for law enforcement. Um, and if you guys wanna research it, it's under chapter subdivision B of twenty-eight E. And it talks about how you can form a district for these small towns. I haven't researched it thoroughly, but it says right in there about what you can do and the revenue that you can raise through taxes, but I think everybody's been taxed enough the way it is now. And I just, there's just no way Cusworth County can provide law enforcement coverage in these small towns and guarantee X amount of hours with the staff that we have. I could challenge everybody in this room right now, lock the door, and we'll stay here till April second of next year. And you guys decide who's gonna cover twenty-four hours in jail and who's gonna cover twenty-four hours out in the county. Who's gonna, you know, who's gonna take their vacations, who's gonna call in sick, who's gonna provide coverage for each amount of towns that we have. And I think we'd have a pretty good argument by week two of who wants to go home and who wants to not have to do that. And, uh, the only point I'm bringing across is, we don't have the resources to provide coverage in these towns X amount of hours per week, there's no way we can do it. The counties that do have it, they hire deputies to do the contracts, and then those towns pay fifty, sixty, seventy thousand a year for the wages of that deputy, to go toward the wages.
Okay, I think this discussion is done for today.
Okay. Well, we can move on from there, um, next one that probably would have some budget implications would be a change in employee health insurance package. We talked about health insurance quite a bit over the last couple of months. Um, that is a major expenditure, I think we all know that, but looking at our budget, I think that is a big piece that we need to look at, so. Any thoughts from the board?
Get the elephant in the room, maybe we can start doing.
It is.
I went through the budget and I can go, I can find some dollars to save, but if you wanna save a million dollars, you're gonna have to look at it.
Yep. Yep.
That's just a fact, I mean, we can knock off maybe three hundred thousand in a couple places, a hundred thousand, or not hundred, but twenty, thirty thousand here and there. I'm willing to sit and do it.
Yeah.
If you really wanna knock any money out of the budget, just help me with that.
And at some point, we're gonna have to address it because the path the county is on with our health insurance is gonna have to change at some point or it's not gonna work.
I, I think it needs to be addressed now, um.
So you're just kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, I, I don't think we can continue to do that. Um, the, the changes that we are going to make for stop loss should make a significant difference, but I don't think it's enough for our, well, at the end of the day, our contributions that are planned are still very substantial, um, and.
Your, your contributions that we planned are not gonna keep up to keep the fund balance intact. Unless we change some things in the insurance to begin with.
And.
Then on top of it, you're talking about the budget, you got really two different things you should talk about with insurance.
Well, one of them that I was trying to explore earlier and didn't, didn't really see much or any support from the board on was looking at another plan option. So we have, could have two plans instead of one. It would give employees, um, obviously more options to choose from and flexibility in that regard. But we wouldn't have to pay for all of the options, we could pay for a portion of those options or however we break that down. So the budget side of it is really where our financial contribution comes in. But I think for employee flexibility and actually increasing benefits to employees with other options, I think we need to do our due diligence to have a second plan and.
You were talking about a high deductible plan and then.
With the HSA.
Putting some with the health savings account that would be partially funded by the county.
Yep.
But again, you're not taking any money out of the budget.
Until you change that contribution level.
Well, then we're, we're dealing with what people expect from insurance.
Well, honestly, in my opinion, things should have been changed gradually for quite a few years ago starting, but this is what we have to deal with right now and we need to, we need to make some decisions. We've got thirty-one employees on single policies right now and a hundred on family.
Correct.
And here, just within the last year or whatever, we had to do that resolution to adjust wages to make sure everyone was being paid fairly, the same in, within the job descriptions that they do. And I can, I mean, the fact of the matter is, while they may be paid the same for the same job description, right now, they're not being paid the same on the benefit side of the equation. And we always talk about that as part of their compensation package, but at the end of the day, it's not the same.
So you're saying that somebody that takes a single policy is getting less of the benefit than those that are getting a family policy?
Correct, they always, they have been as long as this has been under this structure.
So what's your remedy?
One dollar level contribution for all employees and allowing them to use it under whichever range of options that we have available. That could be a combination of paying premium plus the HSA, could be all towards premium if it's one of the better policies, but I think that's the big thing is getting the contribution the same across the board for everyone and then opening up more options.
Right now, you're talking short eight hundred dollars a month for a single, that's top of my head, what are we doing?
Eight, if, are we, something for?
I did not bring those figures along.
I have them here, Roger, we're at, sorry, uh, FY twenty-four, we're at seven sixty-five for single and eighteen eighty-five for family. So yeah, short, just short of eight hundred right now for singles.
That's for the year we're in.
That's current, yep, correct, and we had, we had talked a ten percent increase, previously talked a twenty percent increase, but.
A hundred percent are still up.
Ten, ten percent were a little over eight hundred for single.
You're a little over fifteen dollars on.
Would you like, would you get the figures for you?
It's eight forty-one, point five is.
I would appreciate the right figures, Doug, because I don't.
If you wanna, you would like to grab.
I think we.
Well, it's whether you would like them or not.
I would.
Okay.
I like to know what I'm talking about, so.
I mean, I, I can sit here and listen, but I can certainly, if your desire is to get what we have budgeted, I can certainly provide that to you.
Right.
We need the right figure to make the right decision, so.
Wasn't the conversation that we had about changing the pay-in for health insurance was to get two different plans in place first and to get four-way rates versus two-way rates, so it's, it's a fair for all employees? Because why should a single mother with children be charged the same as somebody with a husband, wife, and three children?
No.
You know, we need to get four-way rates in place, we need to get multiple plans in place so we can make a decision. For April first, you guys are talking about changing insurance, two months away, excuse me, two months away. How can we plan as employees when every time we turn around, something is changing? You gotta give us some time. You need to get the plans in place, the four-way rates, the two different plan options, we have time to review those to make the proper decision for our staff and for our, for our families and not just all of a sudden, there's fifteen thousand people in this county. We have a few complaints, we're throwing everything out the window and starting over. You know, let's talk to the other thousands of people out there and, and see what, what their options are. I just think we, instead of jumping to conclusions, we need to put some time and effort into making the right decisions.
Well, I get that, Phil, there are fifteen thousand people in the county that are gonna be paying twenty percent more in property taxes if we don't do something. And that's, it's not just a couple of complaints, it's, I'm one of them. I just happen to be sitting on the board.
Tom.
Do they understand that this twenty percent increase isn't just because of insurance?
No, I know.
It's because of what the state is doing also?
It is, it is, it's not just insurance, but we're just, when we're looking at ways on what can we, what can we improve on the budget end of things, this is a discussion that is a large part of that.
And, and I'll say one thing and then I'll let Tom get his hand raised, but I guess regardless of our budget in any way, shape, or form, I've always had an issue with the fact that two people could be doing the same job side by side and not being compensated the same for it. Um, that's always been an issue for me and I think it's time it gets addressed.
I know this isn't gonna be popular in this room, I understand that, but when it comes to health insurance, if you look where Cusworth County ranks versus any other county in the state, we're number one for what we provide for health insurance, number one, no one has a better health insurance policy than Cusworth County. You said you froze wages, when the premium goes up, that's a value-added thing to the employees. You didn't really freeze wages because you're compensating the difference in the health insurance. I'm self-employed. My health insurance went up, I had to pick up the difference. It might be something to consider if your health insurance premiums are raising and you froze wages. It might be time for some of the employees to have to pick up that value-added premium. And Josh made the comment, well, if we do that, we have to pay them, you know, if the premium goes up a dollar, we have to pay them a dollar. We can't do that because of IFRS, you actually paying substantially more if you compensate them the difference. And I understand it's complicated, and I understand it's not popular, but it might be something you really have to look at is, if you really did freeze wages, it might be time that Cusworth County is number one in what they provide for health insurance.
Is there other counties with better insurance?
No, there isn't, I mean, if you look at my ISAC, and that's not true.
What did, I guess I come in in the middle of this, what, number one, what are you saying?
Hundred percent of the employees, a hundred percent of the spouse, and.
So you're not talking dollars?
I'm talking what's provided to.
Cause there's, there's counties in the state of Iowa, I can guarantee you, are paying more dollars. Even by putting a percentage, we're self-insured, which has allowed us to be lower than what market is talking.
Insurance?
Oh, yeah, I can, I can get the printout of secondary roads, so I provide it into the board.
If you go to the ISAC website, we're listed as number one.
There's other counties that also provide a hundred percent.
One of three of them is.
And I don't think they go out as far on the children as this company does.
Rod.
We're mandated on that.
I understand that.
Rod.
Speaking of being the county paid, oh, the counties surrounding this, Carter, if you've checked into this, you should know. All the counties around pay the employee self-insurance, but they, not one of them paid family. Some of them have different plans, their deductibles are higher than what Cusworth is. Other county, they, they take the premium for a family minus your health for the single, and they take a percent of that figure to charge for the family. There ain't no one else in the county, you go down the highway eighteen, all the major businesses, look at them, what do they do? Look what your school does, that's.
And that, that was one thing that was brought up before, was what Elkhona School does.
Again, just to reiterate, I'm not, not, not individuals, but that is a, you know, health insurance is a very, very value-added compensation to their wages. And it's a big part of our thing, and you said you froze wages, you really didn't. If you pick up this excess premium, this is something they are receiving as a self-employed, I'm not receiving, and I'm also paying these wages too, through my taxes, so I would like some extreme prudence when you're looking at this.
Doug, do you have the numbers for single and family budget?
Yes, what is budgeted for contribution is eight hundred forty-five dollars per month for single, two thousand seventy-five dollars per month for family, for a total of two million eight hundred four thousand three hundred forty dollars.
That's for the coming fiscal year? Twenty-four, twenty-five.
The year we're budgeting.
Yeah, upcoming budget, yep.
Well, I guess.
That number of thirty and a hundred, what did you?
Thirty-one and a hundred.
Thirty-one and a hundred.
That's the numbers, um, Walmart provided us.
Okay. And three hundred, thirty-three members, I scratched down someplace?
That'd be belly buttons, um, so that would include spouses and children and all those members, yep. Yeah, I, I even know I have that on one of these papers too.
For the month of March, thirty-two single contracts, ninety-eight family contracts, three hundred sixty-two is what we paid for in March.
Three hundred sixty-two belly buttons?
Yes, people, members, number insured, number of actual people insured.
Can you repeat those numbers, Doug?
Thirty-two single contracts, ninety-eight family contracts, that's a hundred and thirty total.
Three sixty-two.
Number insured is three hundred sixty-two.
Okay, thank you.
So our insurance costs is seven thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars per belly button.
Yeah, that's what, that's the term Walmart used, yep. Well, and I do, I do agree with Phil's comment to the extent of, I think we need multiple plan options, and I think the four-tier rates are important because um, a person, I mean, it just, it, it splits out the rates more appropriate, more appropriately, it should give, um, flexibility to those people that have, that would be able to choose different options rather than just single or family.
I'm not disagreeing with you on that, but you've got May second, we're gonna sign up for insurance, so what day is it?
Our enrollment is May sixth.
Open enrollment?
Yeah, I have been visiting with Michelle and I'm expecting final rates to be coming to us shortly.
So we don't have a whole lot of time on the clock to do a whole bunch of things.
Well, we talked about a lot of this previously, so.
Who will you, who will you have? Who will you, who will you have be doing the administration of a multi-tier? Right now, for example, this morning, I received an email from the treasurer's office that said payroll one, here's a contribution to the self-insurance fund. Donna has a spreadsheet in a workbook that she keeps track of what the employees are doing. Retirements, new employees, I take that information, I see whether contributions are correct. And Melissa Arndorfer, who's not present here, she looks at those dollars and makes sure that the payroll is correct. Now, you start introducing more tiers, I'm assuming that's gonna be more work. And all three of us volunteered, or, I'm not even gonna say volunteered, when asked to do this work, accepted it. Accepted the ask. Now you're asking us to do more. Some, sometimes other people are actually talking to Walmart and changing things, or even changing things when some of us volunteers are not even here. So I guess that's us fine and dandy, but how are you going to administer, administrate it, I guess, is one of the questions. And if somebody else in this room would like to start doing that work, you're more than welcome. Or maybe the board would like to do it all.
Yeah, Tom?
So, again, this is a very value-added policy, how many here in this room have an option for insurance elsewhere but choose this one? I know Josh for sure, sitting on the board, has health insurance offered to another place of business, but he chooses this one, it's a very lucrative health insurance policy, probably, I don't, I don't think you'd go anywhere else Doug and get it. And so when you complain, it seems kind of, uh.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the work that's involved to operate the self-insurance fund. I'm not talking about any of the benefits from the self-insurance, so please understand that. There is work for our self-insurance fund. There's always been.
Maybe cancel the self-insurance fund you just have a regular Walmart group policy.
Would you like to know what that would cost?
So, I, I mean, I can tell you.
If you're still in humble, is that like?
Correct, only, you, only certain employers can make, can be self-insured, you have to have proper number, you gotta have a number, minimum number of employees. Self-insurance has saved Cassuth County a lot of money over the years.
Seems like it's costing us.
Well, sure it costs money, but it's saved. And any money that used to go to a premium, if you're paying a premium and that money is not spent, you know who gets to keep it? The insurance agency, not the self-insurance people.
So if you're not spending the money, raise the deductible up and save that money, that's what we do.
And I believe, if I'm not correct, that's what happened this year, Rod?
Right, but we're talking thousands, not just five hundred.
They raised it thousands.
Right, five hundred to a thousand, right?
And my question would be to you, if our benefits are so good, how come neither of you quit being self-employed and applied for a county government?
Would we get hired?
I don't know.
Maybe we should have that every year.
Maybe. There's been plenty of openings and I don't ever remember seeing them fly.
So we can't all work for the company, well.
That's right, you can't, but you're bitching about our benefits.
No, I understand that you're trying to, uh, protect what you have. I understand that, and, and I'm sympathetic to it, but when times are tough, we may have to consider that that's not an option, and maybe you can go back to it when times turn back around.
I'm not saying times aren't tough, but you weren't sitting in here at that negotiating table when we did have a unit and they dangled our insurance in front of us, said, well, we'll give you a one percent raise because we're gonna keep your insurance, and we said, okay. Nobody was in here bitching about that then.
Ten years.
At the end of the day, I mean, as a board, we need to, we need to make the decision whether we're even gonna look at other options or not. I've, I've tried to already earlier in the year. We did get some other options, we made changes to the stop loss, all that with the intention of saving money and on paper, it should, but is the board interested in any other further changes or options? Cause I am. I realize the time's tight now, I wish we would've done it three months ago, but that's not where we're at right now.
Yes, I'm interested in looking at other options.
Roger, Josh?
Unless you have a better suggestion for where to get over a million dollars in, in tax, property tax related.
Wages and benefits are a very large portion of our budget, everyone knows that.
Said a number of times, Cassuth County as a corporation is people, and that's, that's what our services are, and so.
Obviously, there's costs for products and services and stuff that we have to pay for, we don't have control over that, but I mean, a large portion of our expenses is people to provide the services, that's.
We went to a fifteen hundred and three thousand dollar deductible. Correct?
We, no, we went to a thousand and two thousand.
We went to a thousand, two thousand.
It doubled from five hundred and a thousand to a thousand and two thousand.
That's where we're currently sitting, is going into the coming budget year, we're gonna have a thousand, two thousand.
That's what we had planned with the seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss. The stop loss does not change anything for the employee that's on the administration side of it, but the deductible, yeah, I believe was thousand and two thousand.
By changing that, what total dollar amount does that come out of the budget? How does that get us to that million and whatever?
Which, which part are you asking about? Deductible or stop loss? Insurance.
Deductible, deductible, what is that saving in the basic?
The deduct, the changes we made to the deductible are rather small in the grand scheme of things, the stop loss was a major, major impact, that was well over a million dollars. The deductible, if I remember right, was maybe a hundred thousand?
I don't think it was that.
If that.
No, it wasn't a hundred.
There was, there was a couple of options we looked at for different deductible levels, but they were very small pieces of the equation.
How far away are we from the target? And the reason I ask, and maybe you can update me because, to be honest with you, I've been too busy with other things to pay attention to what's going on up here, but when we had this discussion a month ago, month and a half ago, and with the, who's the Walmart person?
Michelle. Michelle.
And with the, with the change, you know, the zero percent raises across the board and the changes in the insurance that you were talking about and looking at, I thought that got us close. And now I'm hearing this million dollars out again, which is where we were a month, month and a half ago. So I'm just kinda curious, if I could, please, give a little explanation on that, cause I'm.
The last round of discussion that we had, that was pertaining to the issues we had with funding, ending fund balances. So we cut things out of the budget to fix where we're going to be with our fund balances. And, and that is fine, but in order to do that, now we're looking at a large increase in property taxes, and so what the, what we're trying to do is figure out how to not have a large increase in property taxes.
And I understand that, that's, that's our point, so, because we were talking, there's like a million, almost a million dollar change in the insurance. A million dollar savings, and so I, I understood that to be what our target was, I think it was nine hundred and some thousand dollars, and so we were there. So, I'm just trying to, to, to compare that to where you, I was hearing you talk today, we need to find a million dollars to, to, to cut property taxes, you know, so nine hundred thousand dollars savings with the plan that you had decided was the thousand, two thousand, and then Kyle, we were talking, I know about having that additional plan, which I was in favor of, you know, to, to have an option there, which could potentially save even more, depending on how people, how many people go on to that. But now I'm hearing we need another thousand, is that in addition to the thousand saved by the insurance change you made?
Million, yeah.
Did I say a thousand?
Yeah, you said thousand.
Sorry. It's tax time, I wanna get that down, but a million dollars, so we need to find another million dollars. How much was the zero percent raise across board saving?
Two hundred and some thousand.
Two hundred and some thousand, yeah.
Okay.
How do you figure that that's a savings, I guess, if you, that's zero percent of anything is zero?
It's a savings over what we had previously agreed to and anticipated, yes. So it's, it's just the difference there.
Well, I know a lot of, I don't, I don't know where else you can go to have as, even as low a deductible as we have, without paying a lot of money for it, but I know at Farmers Mutual, even if you're higher up in the company, that's close to four thousand dollar deductible. I, depending on what plan you have, but I guess, I know I've talked to several insurance people and the days of really low deductible plans are slowly going away, but I, I know Jack had, that was one of the things he was wanting to push during insurance discussions, was a a high deductible plan to move the deal further, but.
Well, and I, I can give a example from the school since we had talked about that.
What does the school do?
For a single policy right now, their cost is seven, on this is, this is a high deductible plan, they're, they offer three plans, I believe, so then you have your tiers within the plans. Michelle recommended no more than two plans, I don't know why, that was just her recommendation, is two plans. But on this specific plan, it's seven forty-four a month per single policy. There is no co-insurance for anything, it is a PPO network, which would be the same as what we're currently on, it's three thousand dollar deductible and three thousand out-of-pocket max. And the school contributes fifteen fifty a year to their HSA. So basically, half of their deductible and out-of-pocket max would be covered by the employer if they maxed it out every year. But their premiums are at seven forty-four for a single policy.
You said fifteen fifty for family?
No, fifteen fifty per year they contribute to an HSA.
Per year?
Per year. So it's like a hundred and thirty a month, whatever, I mean, their, their total would be under a thousand dollars a month per employee for a single policy.
They're giving eight hundred and seventy dollars a month for insurance.
Yeah, they'd be just under nine hundred.
But that doesn't include family taxes for individuals?
That's just a single, I got some numbers that were possible for family, but I'm not real confident on those, so I'm not even gonna share them right now. But the, the single policy numbers I'm confident on. And that's, obviously, that's the operational cost to the school.
They're not selling, sure.
I don't know all the details of their plans, I, I know the big thing.
Most schools are at least partially self-funded.
Yeah, and I, I don't know on Elkhona for sure, but I know that like the network was one thing we talked about, so this is a PPO, so it would still be the same as ours. Believe they're also at Walmart, so I mean, it'd be, it'd be the same, same structure. But yeah, three thousand deductible and out-of-pocket max and fifteen hundred a year has contributed to the HSA, so if they, if they didn't use any healthcare coverage in the first year, in the second year they got another fifteen hundred, if they maxed out that second year, they would, all of the money for their healthcare costs would still be employer provided hypothetically, it's just obviously, how, how situations happen in the real world, whether there's an illness, car accident, whatever, if you have healthcare costs, that would be the structure, but if you didn't use it, you would be able to bank it and use it later.
Do you know who administers it?
I don't know if they have an employee or anything that way, no, but it's, it's Walmart.
But if we were to go to that, we'd have to have somebody administer it, I would assume.
Well, and I, I did check with one of our local banks, they, cause I know, I thought Michelle had talked about some sort of fees for HSA or whatever, and I don't know about all the banks in Cassuth County here, but I was told there's no administrative fees that this one bank charges, they could just walk in, open up an HSA and, and we can make the contribution to it, so.
You're saying that Woodruff Blue Shield tracks a three thousand dollar deductible and you cage the employee in?
So the deductible, well, I don't know what they do for information-wise now or into the future, that's not my expertise. And the HSA is the employee's responsibility to spend that money in compliance with the rules and all that, and I believe if it's up to the IRS basically, to, if they were ever audited, they would have to show that that money was spent for healthcare purposes and and kinda track it that way. I'm by no means an expert in that, but it's, that's the core information that I have as a comparable option. And really, our, just kinda logically thinking through it, I think our, if we went to a high deductible plan, and I don't, I thought Michelle had given us some numbers before on that, but I couldn't find them last night, I don't.
Well, three thousand is a really high deductible plan.
No, and I believe she said thirty-five hundred is the lowest plans they'll do going forward. So whether it was thirty-five hundred, four thousand, five thousand, whatever, I mean, the, the principle of it is the same, the, the numbers obviously can vary.
Five to ten.
Well, on here though, those are HSA or HRA qualifying, they're all, no, so they're, they're not high deductible plans. Those had higher deductibles, but they weren't high deductible plans. I don't, I don't remember.
I think if you asked her, she had and she did not, I don't remember.
Yeah, but if we could, if we could bring our premium costs down for, especially just talking single policies right now, if we can bring our premium costs down, we could still have room to contribute to an HSA with a lower total contribution across the board and give employees more flexibility. Doug?
I just wanna say, you were just talking about a single contribution of nine hundred and some dollars per month that some entity is putting into their self-insurance for a portion of health insurance and an HSA, is that correct?
Yep.
And we're talking about Cassuth County paying eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and sixty dollars per month for health insurance, so I ask, where is the savings, where's the county gonna have a savings?
I don't think the single side of the policies is the savings, it's on the family side of the equation. I don't think the single side of the policies is the savings. It's on the family side of the equation.
You don't think or you don't, you're speculating or it's bad?
As I think everyone in here would acknowledge, most employers, if not all, cover all or a very high percentage of single healthcare costs for premium specifically. The example I laid out was premium plus an HSA totaling still in the neighborhood of what we do. The difference is, um, charging either the difference or percentage of the difference for family plans, so.
Well, I haven't heard any of that discussion from this board in the last fifteen minutes about having employees contribute towards the family. I've only heard talk about getting different tiers. I mean, if, if you're gonna talk about trying to save money, you're, you're confusing everything with, with other issues.
So what I laid out, I'll get to you in a second, Chris. Um, what I laid out was the structure for a single plan as a comparison with a high deductible plan option. The high deductible plan option should give increased flexibility and choice to our employees. That was my purpose there. The comparison of dollars then is the follow-up to that of how much employees pay for family coverage. And that is definitely a part of it. Chris, did you have a question coming?
So essentially what you're saying then, as you're looking at, anyone that's on a family plan paying up to twelve hundred dollars a month? That's the difference, roughly. It's eight forty-five to two thousand seventy-five, so roughly twelve hundred dollars a month.
That would be the, that's the difference on paper right now, yes.
So potentially you're looking at, at that as an option of anywhere from zero to twelve hundred dollars a month.
That's with our current.
You're gonna take that from people on top of the no cost of living and whatever, and I, I get all that, but you have people that, in my, this isn't even my situation, I'm just, you have people that they have a paycheck and now you're gonna say, we're taking twelve hundred of that away. I assume some people have bills that that's gonna cause problems with. They budgeted that in because they were, have been afforded the opportunity to have their healthcare paid for. But I'm not saying that something doesn't need to change, cause again, I don't like paying taxes any more than anybody else. But to sit here on April second and say July first, we're gonna take this from you, you're not giving people a whole lot of time to even figure, figure out where, and yeah, I, I'm, I know is the extreme of, of the difference, the, the entirety of it, but I imagine somewhere there's somebody that three hundred dollars could be a make or break. I don't know everyone's situation. I, I know it's not mine and very thankful for that, but that, that's something that has to play in is we're talking a very short time for somebody to go, what am I gonna do? And they have to figure that out.
I don't, I don't like timing any more than anyone else.
Well, if we're gonna speak timing, this issue's been coming for a while, when you guys weren't donating to the self-insured fund and you cut it back. So now your lack of planning is falling back on the employees. And how is that our fault?
We can forget the insurance discussion if anyone has a, a better idea of how to manage the budget better. I've.
So I did my math, but I was, so someone that's a start-out employee, so I don't, somebody that's just started, say they got on family plan. If you change that to they're gonna pay twelve hundred dollars a month for their family plan, assuming thirty percent is withheld in taxes, that's half their paycheck gone, because they have to pay for health insurance.
So again, you know, and I don't wanna catch flak from Willie for not working in the courthouse, but as a self-employed, minus thirty-two thousand, that, that's what I pay a year for me and my wife. My deductible is five thousand. You know, I agree, I, I agree actually, believe it or not with Chris, but we do have to figure out something.
Right.
We have to cut these taxes somehow. I don't wanna see anybody suffer. I, I'm the last guy to see anybody have to give anything back. But when times are tough, that's the way it works. And, and no one's saying, if everybody just comes to rallies together and says, let's fix this budget and offer solutions, I think we can get through this without this major levy that you guys are talking about. You know, so not only is my health insurance going up, which went up approximately four thousand dollars this year, not only is my health insurance going up, but also I have to pay the levy to pay everybody else's health insurance, you know, it can't keep falling back on me either. And so let's come up with a solution, some way, somehow, or a compromise, and let's, let's get through this. That's, that's just what's gotta happen. I mean, the reality is, that's what's gotta happen.
Well, and I don't disagree with Tom in, in to a certain extent. My problem is in line with what Chris had said. When you look at, um, and when a person starts employment or has been here for twenty-five years, okay? Uh, good times and bad. Wages include the discussion of health insurance. And so when you say, well, when good times are good, you know, we can look at that. When good times are bad, you need to pull back. The problem is when good times are good, I think generally speaking, it was cost of living increase. Which puts and keeps, if you look at the reason for cost of living, keeps it at the same as the years go on. And so for those employees, and I don't know, I don't know, what Hancock, Winnebago, Palo Alto, I don't know if they pay their employees. But what I can say is that when you offer full coverage for family plan and then use that as a calculation and say, but we're gonna pay you less as a salary, that's all part of the combination payment, payment package. And so, you know, the, the idea of the, yeah, health insurance has gone up, that's just, that's just part of the, the, the package. You know, and so, I mean, I, I have a concern about that, much the same as my concern it was with the courthouse hours. You need to take that into consideration as far as timing. I disagree with Tom on the self, the self-employed situation. I'm self-employed too, on my part-time job. And when times are tough, I have to raise prices. That's just how you have to do it. You go to the grocery store and buy your essentials. How much was a gallon of milk five years ago? How much was eggs, or eggs, five years ago? When times are tough, the grocery store has to increase prices too in order to stay in business to provide the needs of the community it serves. So, you know, it's understood when you have increase in costs of business, you have to increase your revenue to meet those. That's, that's just the way business operates, whether you're a county or whether you're a grocery store. Well, and, and unfortunately it doesn't work that way, but you know, the, the reality is, you know, the, we're not, the, the county isn't a farmer. I mean, we.
We don't have any of the taxes that are coming from farms, from the rural.
I, I live in the rural. I live in the rural. I mean, so I, I understand that, yeah. And so my point is, is that we can't just necessarily say that, that, you know, it's increasing costs aren't a part of, of the calculation. Now, what I do agree with you on, Tom, I mean, we need to come with some solution. A solution that, that works, because what wouldn't work? And where there'd be a complaint from everyone in the county is if, as Chris pointed out, if there is a situation where people just can't survive on what you decide and they have to go somewhere else to work. Then, when you come to pay your property taxes, or when you come to have, you know, something served, or you come to provide or, or get some service from the county and, and, you know, there, there is anybody there, or it's taking too long, there'll be a complaint about that too. So I mean, I don't know what the solution is. I, that's the first time I've ever been this involved in, in the budget, but, um, but yeah, it's, it's, you know, and it's unfortunate because for farmers, I mean, you're, you're suffering the, the input cost, the increase in the input cost because of that scenario. It's costing them more money, so they're raising the prices for you. And you guys are totally completely dependent upon the market price. So I, I don't disagree with you on that. And it's, um, you know, it's a, it's a really difficult situation.
Doug, you had.
Yeah, the secondary road department, I spoke with the board this morning talking about programs, construction programs. I completely eliminated every construction project on granular surface road. I have made the decision, and I don't know if the board agrees with me or not, that we're only gonna keep up our paint growing system right now. Drop in service. There's other things I can bring to the board that's gonna change service. First of all, I need to know, and I will bring it to you, what are our goals? Our, is our goal to keep the road department at the same amount of employees that we are right now? Is our goal to reduce employees? Is our goal to keep services up? We could save a lot of money simply by not mowing any roadways. I'm sure there will be calls that roadways are not being mowed. However, we can do that. We can save money by not painting edge lines on roads. That's nothing to do with any of the structure. Mowing's nothing to do with any of the structure, but we can do that. But I can bring you a bunch of information, and I will. I've been jotting things down as we, the last couple of months. But as a board and services, I want you to understand that, that if we do not mow and we end up saving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars by not hiring a couple of part-time employees, not running those tractors, that you're confident and you're willing to say, we had to stop doing that.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you. I, I believe our road would go with that. That's, that's a excellent start to the compromise we need to hear. Thank you.
Unfortunately, that's not gonna help the problem because the taxes that are increasing are in general supplemental, not in rural.
We, we did move stuff.
Could it not be moved back to rural then?
If you took some of that out, some of it could.
And the issue with making changes in the secondary road department to actually affect the taxes, it would have to be a decrease in dollars contributed, which then would fall back on our seventy-five percent local effort requirements. I think we can work around that with some creative ideas, especially like using TIF funds, the Michelson Marsh Bridge that we've talked about, if that's completed in the next fiscal year, that would count as local effort. So I think there are, there are ways we could accomplish it, but just not painting edge lines and not mowing on its own would not solve the problem.
But it's a start.
But it, but until, until we reduce the dollars contributed for those purposes, it doesn't do anything. Just, just changing those would, would increase the or decrease the expenditures from the secondary road department fund and the budget. But to actually get back to incre- to help general basic or rural basic, you have to decrease the transfers to that department. So it's some of the mechanics behind that.
The only way you're going to control a budget is to watch expenses. When you watch expenses, you will reduce revenue. So let me ask you a question. You're saying the taxes being, the levy that's being raised on everybody is going to general basic?
General supplemental.
General supplemental. Do you have that pie chart where all that stuff gets dispersed to?
Dispersed to.
Pie chart, yeah. This year, I got the last years up here if you wanna look at it.
Where does it all go? You know, it's being said that, you know, our insurance is a big cost. How much of it actually goes to the county and not everywhere else? To different entities?
You're talking schools and all that sort of stuff?
Yeah, sure.
That, that's separate, that's a separate, yeah, that's a separate budget. This is talking our budget, our county budget.
If, if you're looking at a farm in Burke Township, fifty-one, fifty-one point five-five goes to the school, five point three-eight goes to the college, two point, three point two-nine goes to the township, sixteen point nine-six goes to county general basic. We're looking at six point nine-eight for supplemental.
Which would substantially go up.
Which is what we're talking about now.
So you're saying this twenty percent increase, it would be twenty-six percent coming to the county?
At extension, it's point seven-eight. And then you're, you got the hospital at five point two-three, the assessor at one point three-four, and state levies at zero to one percent. And rural services, which Doug's talking about is eight point four-eight.
But that's, that's all the budget for Cassuth County. That's not general supplemental. That's assessor budget, county budget, hospital budget.
Those pie charts split out where, where the total dollars go to the different entities, different funds, all that. What we're talking about is the nearly twenty percent increase was in the total tax dollars that Cassuth County alone would receive. So that, the, the comparison for this upcoming year going forward, that Roger was reading off there, if those numbers are translated into that, if, if everyone else stayed the same and ours increased, we would have a bigger piece of the pie. If everyone else increased at the same time and the same rate hypothetically, then the portion of the pie would stay the same, but the total still gets bigger. So it's all, it's all a comparison tool is what I'm trying to say. But I guess, Chris.
So if I was, I just further clarification on that. So you're saying the total, the total budget of dollars is where the twenty percent increase is? So that would reflect directly?
Total tax dollars.
Total tax dollars.
Total tax dollars levy.
Yep.
Which is coming in, but that wouldn't equate to a twenty percent increase in property tax directly.
Right.
Because you are only, call it half of the tax levy, so.
Less than half.
Yes.
That would decrease that percentage. And it's also, so your total tax dollars levy that's coming in is taken against the total valuation of the county. So if the valuation of the county increased, then that would also raise that, which would in fact have lowered that percentage.
So.
So it wouldn't be necessarily that you're, you're saying you pay a thousand dollars a year in taxes?
Tammy's got an Excel sheet. I think if she runs through that, I think that'll get to where you're going mentally.
So.
We, I mean, we're talking about change to employee health insurance package. I hate to make a comment, but now we're talking complete budget and increase in property taxes. We're kind of getting on.
They're, they're very closely tied together, so I mean, it's hard to talk one without the other. But if you can, if you. But if you can, if you can drill through the highlights of your sheet.
Explained to the board this morning to, because there's been a lot of questions about this and I wanted to clarify how things work a little bit. So, I took a property, rural property, um, that last year was valued at two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, uh, five hundred and seventy-four, is now valued at three hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven. We don't pay taxes on that value amount because of the rollbacks. Last year's rollback was like fifty-four. This year is like forty-six, so it's dropped a lot, which means that last year I would have paid tax, this property would have paid taxes on a hundred and fifty-two thousand. This year it's only paying taxes on a hundred and forty-seven thousand because of the rollbacks. So, if you look at that, it's actually showing that that property is going to pay less in taxes this year than last year because of the rollbacks. So, you can't just look at the property value to see how much you're going to pay in taxes because of the rollbacks decreasing, you're going to be paying, well, you could be. This is not everything. This is just an estimate amount because it doesn't have assessors, all that information in there. But based on the notice that was sent out in the mail and last, and the assessed values for twenty-twenty-three, it's showing that this property that's valued at three hundred and seventeen thousand is going to be paying less than last year.
But you also had quite an increase in this valuation of farm ground and they decreased all the valuations on industrial property. They took a thirty percent off industrial and what they actually, what that did is added thirty percent to rural.
Yeah, and, and this doesn't include farm ground. This is just, this is just a residential acreage. It's not a, not yet.
Some of this tax increase, you should be yelling at your state representatives because they took thirty percent off of commercial, which really affected the rural residential and the city people because you just added the taxes to them. And that's why we're having a twenty percent increase.
In value.
In value.
In tax.
But then that, that equates to taxes because you're taxing unvalued.
Yeah.
So, it, it, so just my simple view of this, if, that forty thousand dollars I pay in property taxes, two hundred and sixty goes to the county, fifty-five, five hundred and fifty goes to the school.
Yes.
Are you guys then complaining to the school?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Good, good. I'm glad because, you know, I, I don't, I don't see how it's, obviously not, we're a part of that. We're a part of that issue and, I mean, we need to address our part, but I just want to make sure all of the, all of the other entities are, are addressing their part too that are larger than us in far as what the property taxes are going to.
Well, we've had a big increase in the hospital over the years. You know, that used to be not even, we didn't even consider part of the budget. Now you get five and a half percent. I consider that part of the budget.
What you said was, uh, fifty-four percent of our taxes goes to school. How much did they raise your tax levy versus what the county's raising?
Well, too many months.
It depends.
Year and the next year. Right.
It depends what school district you live in.
Right, but I mean, it was a particular one here.
Yeah, fifty-two point eighteen in twenty-one, twenty-two and your fifty-one point five-five in twenty-two, twenty-three.
Right, but what was your tax?
On Burke.
What was your tax levy though?
It went, it went from nine dollars and ninety-seven cents to ten dollars and two cents.
It's going to go up considerably with what just passed, you know, we just.
Yeah.
And I'm on the school board in the north part of the county and I haven't yet, in the twelve years I've been on the school board, have anybody committed to challenge our taxes in the north part of the county?
Thing I wanted to say is most of the employees in the county, I would say, have been with another employer before. I would say. They joined the county, they got the benefits of the county. They probably didn't have full health insurance with their, their employer, probably now they do. So, if you think to the way they're going back because they're old jobs, you might say. They, they moved from the job to this job for some reason.
Are we just seeing how it's been?
I, I guess, at the end of the day, we're gonna, we're gonna need to make decisions here. Are we putting those in?
The board discussed. Chatter.
Rod, we're, we're gonna have a discussion here. So, thoughts from the board as far as open to other possibilities or changes in any form for insurance?
I'm not that fool. My, my discussion on today would be to start with our budget. Go through and take everything out that we don't need before we kill insurance.
Okay, you do know, right, that this has to be published in the paper Friday?
Right.
Okay.
I know that.
Am I the only department head that already signed off on our budget?
No, everybody did.
Everybody had.
So, we've all, as department heads, have signed off on the budgets for this coming fiscal year. So, why did we sign off so early to get change in? I'm pretty sure I signed off on my budget almost a month ago, maybe it was last night, I don't know, but.
Yeah, you did.
Uh, we signed off on it, we stopped negotiations, we stopped everything, we're working on it. We accepted the zero percent, we accepted the change in insurance and we signed off as department heads. That's why I'm here today because I see on the agenda was increase or change in employee health insurance, law enforcement contracts, I sent them out in February, they're signed. It seems like we're trying to fix something that's already too late for this year to fix. And I agree, there's something we gotta do to fix it. Cut services, you know? I can take away all patrol cars and we can just handle everything by phones. But I guarantee we're gonna have complaints. So, we gotta look at doing something, but I just think we're way late in the game. As you said, you gotta have this published by Friday.
Technically, we can still make reductions over what gets published. So, that is, that's not final until it is actually approved at our, after our public hearing. Regardless of what is published, we can make reductions up to the eleventh hour.
So, why are we in a rush to sign off as department heads then?
I, I guess, just to put it, put it bluntly.
Because we're like, some of us in this room are elected officials also. And I'm not hearing these complaints out there in the public about, you know, the sheriff's office. I can only speak for me as an elected official. But what I am hearing is what is going on with this budget? You know, why? I know, I'm still waiting for an explanation why we went from that three million dollar ending fund balance down to two hundred and some thousand. And unfortunately, what I hear out there is, oh, they're blaming it on, well, the sheriff's office is driving fancy patrol cars. All right, we'll take them away. We'll handle everything by phone calls. We'll cut services if that's what they want us to do. But the people have to understand that the majority of our services are people, wages and benefits. I, the only thing I can cut is, you know, take away the patrol cars and we'll just handle everything by phone. We can close the jail. That'll save us two million dollars, but in reality it won't because now you have to hire more people to transport every day. Everything's mandated by the state comes down on us and then we hear the blood, but here it's mandated from the state.
Wasn't it about a month ago you reviewed the budget? There's an item, I missed or special budget hearing, is that one item?
There was numbers that, um, were a piece of the factor to get our ending fund balances that, um, was not, it didn't get into the computer correctly and stuff. So, when we were, when we were looking at the ending fund balances, we thought we were okay. And then when we found out the data wasn't correct that we were looking at, we had to make changes. And to be a hundred percent blunt, at that point in time, we had the decision of moving things and increasing the levy rate or laying off people or a combination thereof. Those were the big ticket items we were, we were looking at. Health insurance is somewhat in the same conversation as people. Um, it affects the same thing, but those were some of the big ticket items. It's, yeah, question?
Yeah, so, to follow what Roger said, uh, I, I live out in rural. I have not heard one complaint about the sheriff's department. In fact, I've heard nothing but good. What I have heard for a rumor, and I'm just gonna lay it out here, I heard that there was an accounting error and this is probably heavily in the county, that there is an accounting error and it's a one and a half million, one, over one and a half million dollar accounting error and it deals with the ARPA money. And that's never really been addressed as, is that true? Because I heard it got put in another time and this, this isn't coming from me. I've heard it all through the county. So, what is this, this error that you keep talking about? I'd like to know.
So, in our, probably the easiest way to explain is actually looking at the budget sheets that we have here. There is a, I don't know if you want to explain this or not, but there is a column for all of the, all the departments are the same. There is a budget column for fiscal year twenty-five, then there's a reestimate column for twenty-three, twenty-four, then an amended column for the total budget for that line item, then a used year-to-date, which had a dollar and a percentage. That reestimate column is a piece of the equation on how our ending fund balances are calculated. In some of the sheets that were put into the computer, those numbers were not in there. So, when they, when it was realized that those numbers were off, they were, everything was double-checked, gone through again, found where the error was, put those numbers in so that it was correct. Then we saw the actual numbers that we were, that we should have been looking at all along.
So, what are these numbers pertaining to?
It's just the budget worksheets that the departments fill out. They fill out their budget worksheets online. It's the first year we did that. They filled it out on, in Excel spreadsheets and then they were downloaded into the system. Well, some of them put the numbers in the wrong column, so when they were downloaded into the computer, it didn't transfer correctly. So, then it showed that we had more in our ending fund balance than what we did. So, it didn't change the situation. The board just thought that there was more in the budget in the ending fund balance than what was there.
So, if it didn't change the situation, where'd the money go? I mean, that, I know there wasn't.
There wa- it wasn't ever there because those were zeros.
A healthy budget for years and then all of a sudden, just this, this omission caused.
No, it wasn't the omission that caused anything. The omission didn't cause anything at all. It was always there, they just didn't know that it was there.
What did change? Yeah, to, to, to Tom, and, and I'm gonna come in a different way because I, I'm not quite sure because it's, I know it's legislation and all that stuff that happened over the last year or two years ago. But, but, you know, what, what, could you kind of just summarize what that was that made this, this massive change? Because that's, 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 I know it has nothing to do with the worksheets. I mean, that, that was a, uh, that's not the issue. The issue is I still don't understand what the state did that made such a massive difference in our budget. That's, that's kind of what I would like to know.
Talking about Senate file seven eighteen.
Yeah, is that what it is?
I know a little bit about it, but not.
No, and I don't, I, you know more about it than I do. I just was.
Senate file seven eighteen, a restricted area of eligibility to raise taxes beyond a three point seven, which we always did at three point seven.
Three point five, three point five.
Oh, three point five.
For general.
Yeah, for general basic, but they didn't put any restriction on supplemental, so really did they put a restriction on? No.
Well, supplemental is limited with what qualifies.
Right.
So, still did.
But in the past, we didn't have, you know, raises as far as budget, any concerns with that back then, right?
No, well, the problem is, is all of a sudden, we didn't have any fund balance to operate for three months from when the new taxes come in and I can't explain it. Tammy had the figures, you know? We operated with the wrong figures for too many months trying to do the budget. And then in the end, you do the budget in one day or try to do the levy rate in one day.
But that has to do with the budget worksheets and budget process. I'm talking about the change that occurred between last year and this year, maybe the last two years.
Why are you in the situation to begin with?
Yeah. Was that?
Why are we in the situation to begin with?
Exactly. And again, it's not, we weren't operating on that. We were operating under the understanding as far as what we're submitting to you folks as our budgets were, so that's just, you know, what we're looking at down the road for twenty-four, twenty-five. So, but during this whole process, I've been hearing, and I'm sure the other elected officials have also, is that this year, you know, and I agree, times are tight. No, yeah, I need to apologize. But, uh, the times are tight and we all know that. But I was under the impression that there was some major change that changed down in the state to make it more difficult for us in the county. I understand state unfunded mandates and we've been dealing with them for, forever. But, you know, what is it? If you could just summarize for me, because I really don't know. And when people ask me, what's, I've had people talk to me, what's, what's the difference this year?
Chris, do you know how much, um, the over sixty-five costs the county in revenues?
Not specific, but that would be, so Homestead, um, they added the sixty-five in older credit. So, you get an additional, I think it was thirty-two fifty last year and it goes up to sixty-five hundred now. They stopped paying for that.
We're not getting that back failure.
So, every, every one of those that signed up, that's my loss.
So, it's culmination of all of these, these.
Yeah, and they're, they're, for lack of better words, they're making, making changes that makes them look good and sticks it all to everyone on the local level because they said, well, we did this for you.
By making rules that, you know, we had to publish them all.
So, so I understand that.
Are either of you sixty-five?
No.
Okay, so, well, so Lori, if she signed up for it, you both have to pay more because of it.
But, but you know that's coming when you design the budget, so that's what I.
No, no, we didn't.
No, you won't.
No, we didn't.
Technically, that was done retroactively onto a budget that was already gone or already budgeted, at least as the way.
Already certified.
Yeah.
When, when they, the budget for, um, twenty-three, twenty-four, when this got put out, was for that twenty-three, twenty-four budget, but the twenty-three, twenty-four budget was certified in June of twenty-two or this time of twenty-two, May of twenty-two? This didn't come into effect until last spring. So, that's all money that was short and that's just one instance. But, um, so that on top of, I think, the other restrictions that they can't, so they, they, and again, in my understanding, there's been caps put on what they can raise a levy. So, when the state says, well, we're not gonna pay you for this anymore, so they take that away and we're not gonna pay for this and we're not gonna pay for this. And then they say, oh, and by the way, on top, you can't, so we took ten percent of your stuff away, but you can only raise your stuff by three. You, you can, it's not sustainable to have the same, the same offering.
I, I understand what you're saying. So, so I understand you correctly, then it looks like we all have to compromise some instead of coming after one and, and the other side doesn't compromise. I think we, we all have to compromise some.
When you said sixty-five hundred, what's sixty-five hundred?
Hundred dollars of tax, of, of value. It's not, it's not tax dollars, it's value. So, what that equates down to would, would differ by tax district and everything. So to say, an exact dollar amount would be, um, but, so like.
Nineteen, nineteen years, thirty-two dollars to get off your taxes, right? No, um, they would be off their assessment. I don't, I don't have a specific number.
Uh, let me, I can order the website and look, otherwise I could grab. Um, we have a sheet that says kind of how much like a homestead or, but just a normal homestead is like a hundred dollars. So, I would assume.
Thirty-two dollars for over sixty-five, right?
It, it may be, I.
I think so. So, you're even talking about the dollar, you put a mean in.
But, and I'm, again, I'm not saying that that's the whole issue because it, there, there's not a million and a half. a million and a half dollars worth of credits. Is, that's an example of things that have happened, or how things have happened. I think that this contributes to the situation. I don't think it's maybe the entirety of it, but just, I guess Tammy had asked, and so I tried to answer the question.
Like you drive, on, on a windmill, we planned on six thousand taxes. On the windmill south of Alamo. We're gonna get less than two because of all the rollbacks. And that was all done by the state legislature. So all those dollars that we're not getting off commercial property goes right to your rural assessment, because we're spending the same value.
Yes.
So the lower, the commercials are gonna pay less, you're gonna pay more.
But we're, but we're still talking about the total tax dollars increase. And at the end of the day, we need, I mean, we can, we can explain things all day. There's probably a million questions that could be answered, but we need to make a decision if we're going to make changes or not, and.
But there was not an accounting issue, and there's not an issue with ARPA.
Yeah.
I'm just a messenger that I've been having a lot.
It, it's a, it's a fair question to ask, but that's the answer. But as a board, we need to have all.
Guys, I gotta, I appreciate your time. Sorry, I upset everybody.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I mean. Are we making any changes to employee health insurance today or not? Let's.
I think we should look at another plan option. And, and that's kind of a, to me, it's a foundational piece to look at the rest of the equation. If we don't look at another plan option, uh, really, the only thing left is a employee contribution to consider. Because we can't really change our rates, we gotta have those for the, for the self-insurance fund. But those are two big pieces. There are very few places where a hundred percent of the family policy is paid. And I, I think it's long past time that we need to address that.
You're gonna address wages, right? That's a question that they're gonna ask.
You gotta remember, when we started, that was part of our benefit and wages. And we get that sheet every year, that's our wages. When I came to the county, I took a loss to come to the county, because it was part of my wages.
I just hired my own department in July, my department, my department, brand new. Every one of those people's wages was set based on a benefit of a five hundred dollar deductible. That's already gone. Now to tell them, they're not gonna get a raise for two years, it'll be July of twenty twenty-five, where they see a first raise, and they start July of twenty twenty-three. It's hard to keep going back to employees and say, well, now we've lost this, now we've lost this, now you've got to pay for this. I agree with what the concerns are. I agree there's concerns that we need to make some changes, adjustments. I agree a hundred percent with what these guys are saying. I just think we need to do it in the right timeframe, and we need to do it fairly to all by getting the forward rates in place, getting multiple plans in place, and not just jump to a conclusion, because that has to be posted next Friday.
I agree with Phil on the different plans. Because if I'm understanding correctly, you know, Kyle, you said doing benefits can be fair across the board. But what I'm hearing is the people with family plans are, they're gonna be the ones paying. We're gonna be the ones penalized and have an extra cut in our pay. I mean, because it is part of our wages, that's what's always been considered. So I'm just asking, you keep that in mind, that the only people you're asking to pay are those with families.
So it's a penalty to have a family?
Yes.
There, there are more than one employee that have, and I believe we've had the conversation any year before that, um, some employees may have the option to go with another insurance provider, or a spouse's insurance, or any of those options.
And I'm one of those, I, I do have that option.
And there's nothing wrong with that, but by us paying a hundred percent of the family policy, it doesn't encourage anyone to take any of those other options.
But all I'm saying is, you're not giving us any increase in our pay, and now you're asking just those with families to take a cut.
But you also gotta look at the fact that the, those with the families are getting a better benefit package than those that are single.
I, I understand that.
So the insurance is different for a single to a family?
But you're still asking us to, to make the sacrifice.
The dollar value for a single versus a family is different.
Sure, it costs more, it's more people you give.
It is, but.
But is the benefit better for a family over a single?
When you look at the amount that the county puts into that individual, because they have the family, there is a higher dollar figure going to that person with the family.
I'm not arguing that there's more money in a family. I'm saying, is the benefit for a single better than a family? That is my question. Is it a different benefit?
The plan coverage is the same, but.
Then it's not a change in benefit. It's something that you offered to the people when they started at the county as a benefit.
Just because something was done before doesn't make it right.
Again, I go back to then your lack of planning for the last five years. Seeing this coming down the road is falling back on the employees. No, excuse me, on the family employees.
So those that choose to get on their spouse's plan, are you going to send that nine hundred dollars a month home with them? Since they're not taking the benefit from the county? I mean, will that?
It should be fairer with the singles, yeah.
Yeah, right.
The singles aren't gonna get that. If you, if you do like most counties would do, is the family costs two thousand dollars this year, roughly? The singles eight hundred, it's twelve hundred dollars that costs you, and the family.
So what I'm saying, if, if you're gonna pay the singles premium, say it's eight hundred dollars, and if somebody chooses to take it with their spouse, then you get that eight hundred dollars to help pay for that premium to their spouse.
You're arguing that eight hundred dollars is a single, ain't ya? Just like the single.
But I'm not, it's not policy. She's saying that she moves to a different, she goes to a different policy away from the family.
Yeah, they don't take their policy.
Is the county gonna reimburse her for not taking it? Because they're paying it to the other singles.
If, if we could.
Still money coming out of the budget.
So you wanna pull this.
The county doesn't have the mobility to, to help turn it down.
You're, you're.
Yeah. If, if we could put that into a HSA or something, and have it, have it be available, I would see that as no difference to, um, paying a premium in that aspect. I don't know all, every, I, we'd have to check to make sure we cross all the Ts and dot the Is to be in compliance with everything that's involved here. I don't, not gonna pretend to have a hundred percent of the answers on that. But just general principles, I would have no issue with that, because our cost would be fixed.
But if you were to reimburse people that were on a single policy, we would increase the cost of insurance to the county, because we'd be spending more money, correct?
Say that again.
If you give everybody the same package, we're gonna increase the cost of insurance to the county, because the ones that are single are gonna get a stipend.
And if the people who move away from your insurance are the healthy ones.
Yeah.
You're not gonna, your cost is gonna go up with what pool you have left, and that's gonna cost you more in the end anyway, so.
Yeah.
Don't think.
Just because by taking people away and having to move somewhere else, isn't necessarily a cost savings.
Well, we add a higher deductible plan, that's not gonna, you know, guarantee that some people are gonna move to that lowering our premiums. That's the problem. You, you, you put in a high deductible plan with the option of having an HSA, that's.
The plan is, the plan is one piece of the equation here. And, I mean, maybe we just need to talk specific employee contribution, because that's where you make a difference on dollars. Any thoughts from the board on that? I guess I've already shared mine multiple times.
Well, we have a killer deal that we pay a hundred percent of the family. I, none of the other jobs that I've ever worked has paid more than fifty percent of the family. Now, to say that that's what we need to go to, I don't think so. Because we need to look at what that would take away for wages. You know, and, and we're already giving zero percent for wages. Now we're, and we're raising the deductibles, so they are gonna have to pay, you know, a little bit more out of pocket for, as a contribution. But then we would be taking away what they're getting paid for them to be able to contribute to a family plan. I just, I don't see that as being a huge fix, more than it causing an issue for our employees.
Roger, got any thoughts?
I've got a lot of thoughts, but I'm not gonna solve your problem today.
Where are you at for employee contribution?
I think it's been very hard to have employees contribute anything with health insurance and not give raises. I just.
And that, that's where I'm at, too, is you, you start asking them to contribute, then you have to raise wages.
Then what else are we gonna look at to affect the budget?
Expenditures on.
Are we looking at employees, or what else?
I think you, this year, you know, you're gonna raise twenty percent. What are you gonna do next year? I, this is, your hands are tied in the road, but it's not gonna work forever the way it is.
So are we talking about reducing employees? Or where else are we gonna find?
What are you gonna do it next year?
No.
In your next budget, what, how are you gonna get it to work? I don't know how you can add, how we added a million dollars to the budget this year, because I didn't, went through the book, and I didn't see a whole lot of things that we increased. It's just that we don't have any reserves left in general basic. We have no fund balance, correct? If we don't raise taxes. That's, that's the issue. We spent more money than we would have.
Well, if, if there's no interest in changing health insurance, I guess the budget as a whole is next big topic, because it's either the budget that was planned and published gets approved, or it gets changed, or it doesn't get approved, and we revert back to our current stuff.
We revert back to last year's budget that we're operating on now. We'll end up with no fund balance to operate for two months.
Yep, so we need some solutions here. Like, right away.
What, what, may I just ask a question? I know this is getting long, but I thought that's, that's what I did in my office, went back to last year's budget. So I mean, my office is spending, or anticipated to spend the same this year as it did last year. So mine's last year's budget. Is there another area that isn't last year's budget?
ID had a great, pretty good increase in budget, about thirty percent.
There was.
Secondary road budget was bigger last year than this year.
No.
So I, I mean, just speaking for my, my office, being elected, so elected official in that office, I'm doing last year's budget, and so there's no increase in mine.
No.
With the exception of that part-time.
Right. And I, I went through the budget again, and I.
And if that twenty thousand dollars is going to throw something in there, I can work with you on that. But I mean, the, the reality is, with the exception of that, it's last year's budget.
We, we could cut some contingencies out, eighty thousand, you could cut, you know, economic development. We don't have to give them money. There's a couple of other ones that are discretionary, that we could trim a couple hundred thousand off, so.
And I anticipate mine to be quite a bit less, because I have one staff retiring, and the new one that I hire will be starting at our step-up basis of forty thousand. So that's gonna be a considerable drop.
Right. But without touching insurance, you're not gonna save much over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, no matter what we do.
Insurance for employees.
Yeah, that's just facts of it.
Right. So those are the two variables I can't control in my budget, are the insurance increases. And, you know, people leave my office, but I mean, those are, those are things that, other than that, are the, uh, my office's status quo.
And I went through the budget, insurance was, not health insurance, the other insurance cost about thirty percent. I've not scrolled over that either.
No, general, general property insurance, that's up thirty, thirty percent.
More litigation out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we also have people that keep suing us in drainage districts, and we keep putting money in the supervisor's fund to pay for people suing us over, to be able to sue. But that's part of doing business, we can't change that.
Why wouldn't that fund come out of drainage district, not out of?
If we can, we do.
If it's drainage, I would hope that everything would be taken care of in the drain. Make the drainage people pay for that.
They do, if it's on a district. But if it's not on a district, it comes out of supervisors.
I think.
If we have anything that's not on a district.
I think there's one that covers, like, a laundry list of districts and the county in general, and that was, that was maybe out of the supervisor's budget. But there's, there's no way to split that out.
I even looked at Beaver Tales, but most of them, probably sixty-five.
Greenish districts.
Yeah.
But I just went through it and looked, and there isn't a lot we can trim off. Any suggestions?
Doug has offered suggestions.
Doug had a couple, but on the backside, we would have to reduce.
I think, I think it's important, though, is, is the board needs to give me advice on what they feel is important. Is it important to keep the same number of road employees as what we have right now? Which is the number of employees the road department needs to move snow. If we reduce the number of road employees, snow removal changes. And that service then changes. Now, if the board, I, I think we need leadership from the board, all us department heads do. It was brought up earlier, um, do we reduce the number of employees? Is, is that what we're gonna do? If there is, you've got to realize your service. I mean, we've talked about hours of the courthouse. We've talked about health insurance. We've talked about cities paying to the law enforcement. And now we're talking about the budget. And nothing's been done, I don't believe, I don't think there's been a decision made.
Not yet.
But we need guidance provided. I need guidance provided. I can, I can offer you, I can say, we're only gonna move snow from seven-thirty to four o'clock, Monday through Friday. That'll save us money. The road department will only move snow Monday through Friday, seven-thirty to eight o'clock, or, excuse me, seven-thirty to four o'clock. That will save us money. Trying to reduce overtime, is that what we're trying to do? Is that acceptable to the board? That will save money. I can come up with some services, but the board's gonna have to give me some guidance. What, what is important? That's what we will provide.
I guess I would say if we're not gonna make a, a substantial change on health insurance, we are gonna have to look at employees.
Trouble, the rural employees is not gonna make any difference. The little basic is not, we're gonna have trouble, it's in supplemental.
We can move health insurance back to rural, and it, it can balance, it's just line items, locations. We can move health insurance back to rural and it, it can balance. It's just line items, location.
So you're just taking employees out of the road?
No, that's.
If rollback changed from fifty-four percent down to forty percent, we're not really changing taxes to the property owner. I don't understand what the issue is.
We're still.
Right, when we have a twenty percent, it sounds like a big number. But if you're taking it away on the other side of the rollback, it really isn't netting a twenty percent. Tammy's example was, it actually was a lower tax than it was prior to the twenty percent increase.
That's for a specific residential property. That's not farm ground. It's, the rollback shifts, shifts the burden from one group of taxpayers to another group of taxpayers. Our total dollars get spread over those group of taxpayers based on how the rollbacks factor all that. So at the end of the day, we're still looking at our total dollars increase. Um, how it splits out because of the rollback is the state and we don't have control over that. So it's a separate conversation, but our total tax dollars is what we're talking about here. I guess Doug, if we're talking about, um, employees, if we reduce, um, time that we're gonna plow snow and reduce employees up, um, in your department, what do you feel you could operate off of with maintaining?
Well, I would have to go and see how much overtime we paid. I can't answer that question right now. I can tell you, mowing, I'm pretty confident, if we don't mow roads, two, two part-time employees during the summer, who's probably about a hundred thousand dollars, you know, dragging there by the time you pay your FICA and everything. And equipment is another hundred thousand, so I think, you know, pretty quick, just coming off the top of my head, we'd say two hundred thousand dollars. Now, I know for a fact, there's gonna be people that call the secondary road department, the county engineer's office, the local shops, and they are going to be upset with that. But, pardon me.
I said Iowa maybe because front corner is a hazard.
Well, that, uh, I'm sorry, but the budget just doesn't allow us to do that. And if that's an acceptable answer, I would hope the board, when you get phone call, you'd say, I'm sorry. I, the very same answer. Not, I'm gonna go look into it and call up a foreman and say, we gotta go mow that. We can't have that kind of activity.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not worth it.
Is there a guideline going on? You said edge lines. You're talking about the painted blacktop lines.
Is there a guideline?
All right, is there?
A design guideline, yeah. We don't have any roads that have a traffic kind of hot enough.
No, I meant, do the painted lines have to be on the blacktops?
Center lines, I believe so.
Outside.
Edge lines, no.
But like this guy said, hazard is for driving, I mean.
It is.
It is.
That's why we started, that's why we started painting them.
Yep.
Twenty years ago. Twenty years ago, we did not have that.
Especially when it's raining out or.
Dark. Animals like to, I mean, people like their roadside mode just so they can see animals at night. But if you can't afford to do it, and, I mean, there's, I can bring up a lot of things. Close the courthouse for three day, to only have it open three days. That'll save some money.
Let's see.
But that might not be popular amongst employees. Will wouldn't have to do as much scrubbing.
That'd be perfect.
But, you know, I, I can, I'm not saying this is what we should do and what we shouldn't do. I can come up with ways to save money. I think anybody, if you ask them in this room, they can say, can save money. A wise man one time, one time told me, the only fair tax is the tax I don't pay. And there's a lot of truth to that. Everybody wants a service, but they don't necessarily wanna pay for it.
Well, any other thoughts? What are?
And I'll be happy to come back after the meeting and go through some things and try to give you some answers. However, I have a budget, county budget, that I thought was going to be approved. I have a DOT budget that needs to be approved by April fifteenth. The road department needs to submit, uh, a budget and program to the Iowa Department of Transportation's by, by April fifteen. So those two budgets need to be the same, the county budget and the DOT budget. So I would like to make sure that's done. I am willing and I'm prepared to try to control spending in the next fiscal year. And that's why I'm willing to come and speak with you about things that could be done in the next fiscal years. Cause it was alluded to, for secondary roads, you think this year's bad, wait till next. Because we don't have a balance anymore. That's been spent. And when you don't have any balance, I think we got one point two, one point three million dollars that are gonna be spent out of balance this year in the road department, the road fund. Next year, that one point two, one point three million dollars is here. So when we start budgeting, there's only gonna be eight and a half million dollars, just using this year's. This year's figures, down from twelve.
Well, unless anyone has opinions right now or thoughts, then I must say we need to take a break for lunch and come back and go through stuff. We can't sit here all day and do nothing.
Yeah. Doug, go ahead, Doug.
I was gonna say, are you gonna go through general? Are you gonna go through departments? Are you gonna call or? I just were asked it.
No, that's a fair question.
Yeah.
If we, if we address, if we address anyone's budget at all, we will call.
Specific for departments, yeah.
I know. I'm just, I'm, I'm supposed to be leaving, but I mean, I guess I need to know if I'm going to call back. If you can figure that out early, since we're heading to Duane, so.
I don't foresee your budget being.
Well, there isn't a lot of, but I don't wanna be left out of the mix. I mean, there's always things we can do, but most of mine is me providing a service. Um, the actual expenditures for individuals are, are very little, but I still want, I would like to know that. I mean, because we have to change our ordinance too.
Right. Doug, if you would be willing to come back after lunch and we can go through some things.
Twelve thirty?
Twelve thirty would be fine.
Okay, great.
Is health, is health insurance can be discussed further after lunch or is that done or?
I don't.
I don't know.
foresee it going where we're kind of at a two-two here, so.
I guess I, I was alluding to secondary roads and secondary roads only.
Any final thoughts on health insurance? Question's been asked.
I'd like to make changes, but if the board is not all on board with it, it's, it is what it is. And we'll have to look at other areas.
I would too, but we're gonna have to figure out something. Okay, well, I'll turn our meeting for lunch here.